Call the meeting to order. Let's see, open session, 6:00 PM for the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present. Any oral communication on the closed session item? This conference with labor negotiators. Seeing nobody rise, we will close oral communications and we'll move off. And then we'll come back here at 6:30. Hopefully, right? All right. Call the meeting back to order. Anything to report from closed session?
Mayor and City Council, the City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiators. Council gave direction to staff, but there was no reportable action.
Very good. Roll call.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present. The location. Please stand and join us.
Pastor Nate Marsh. Let's pray. God Creator Almighty, you are worthy of our praise and of our lives. You made this world beautiful, ordered, and majestic. And you gave us authority to rule and to establish your ways in this place. God be with this council who has the greatest responsibility of all in leading our community. Give them wisdom beyond their capacities. Show them the best ways to further the prosperity of all. Help them to be just mediators. Allow them to be strong in discerning deceptions and the truth. Protect them and their families. Clarify in their minds the right paths and show them your blessings as they lean on your empowerment. God bless our police and fire departments. Lift up the burdens they shoulder for this community. They deal with many difficult situations. Give them peace and joy in you and protect them. Give them wisdom to protect the innocent and confront the wicked. God heal our community divisions and help us to see each other first as fellow humans made in your image. And don't let evil drive wedges between us as we share this wonderful community. Direct our hearts to value what's most important. Expose those who are corrupt and take advantage of others. And Lord, we think of those who have lost friends and loved ones in the crash that happened on Sunday. Lord, it's so hard when we lose so many young. Lord, we also ask for your care of the homeless. Their situations break your heart. Free them from the bondage that keeps them on the streets and protect them. Reveal yourself to them. Help us have compassion and to acknowledge their humanity. God forgive us of our sins. Forgive our failures. Have mercy on us and show us a path that leads to hope, peace, and eternal life. Rule over this meeting, we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing, joining the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its infinite justice and glory.
No presentations elsewhere? Nothing listed? Okay. And welcome, everybody. New faces. You guys will be up soon. Okay. Presentation, San Barbara County Fire Safe Council invited a presentation on Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Alrighty. Hi, I'm Monica Matthews. I am the project manager for the Lompoc Valley Community Wildfire Protection Plan. My, our executive director, Anne Marie Parkinson, should also be here in a moment. She is probably in traffic right now from Galita from another city council meeting. We are busy people. I also have Chief Brian Fallon with us today. He's been extremely generous in giving us his time. I think his crew was also here and he was just sent out, so thank you for all your work.
If you could get closer to the mic when you turn, we're recording and stuff. Thank you.
No problem. Good reminder. But thank you all for being here and I'm going to introduce this project to you all. And I would love for our city council and our mayor to give any thoughts on partners and opportunities for us to broaden the development of this project. Do I? Oh, perfect, thank you. So I'm going to introduce who we are as the Fire Safe Council. I'll review the concept of a CWPP, that's short for Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And we'll talk about the fire dynamics within your region. We'll also outline the development process and talk about collaborators. I know that's a long list. We'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. Okay. So we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are your only fire safe council in the county and we do serve countywide. Not all counties have only one fire safe council, so we are very happy to serve countywide. Next slide, please. This is just our website, just a quick rundown of our programs. I won't go through them, but I highly encourage you to check out our website. They have a lot going on. And we also, of course, on our website have every community wildfire protection plan for the county listed and available for you to read if you're really into reading 80-page documents for different regions throughout the county. And we also, of course, have a website for this project, which is updated daily with developments in this project. All right. So a community wildfire protection plan has three requirements. It is, in essence, a document. That document lists recommended projects, including fuel treatment projects and also projects that will reduce structure ignitability for your home, for businesses, the community at large. Also, a key part of it is collaboration with our fire agencies and with other emergency response agencies, community organizations, all that good stuff. So a CWPP is, as we say, a plan and a process. Like I said, it is a document, but equally important through the development of that document, we hope that networks are reinforced, community relations are forged. And through that, not only will you become a stronger community through having this document available to you that will list the projects that you would like to see in your community, you will also get to know your neighbor through the development of this plan. A key piece of this, this is probably the most important piece, in addition to, of course, building and reinforcing networks and community relations. A key piece of this is this, this document lists projects that you want to see for yourself, for your community, so that they can get funding at the federal level, at the state level, through private foundations. It is required for a lot of funding sources and it is more conversationally encouraged through a lot of funding sources like CAL FIRE. They always want to know, is this project something that is mentioned in a CWPP? So it's a really key way to bring funding and bring more community connections and relations and programs into your, into your community. Now, we're going to talk about where we are geographically. Of course, that black outline in the top left or the northwest corner of the Lompoc Valley region is the city of Lompoc, where we are currently located. And then we have the various residential communities, Mesa Oaks, Mission Hills, and Vandenberg Village. We also have the Correctional Institution, Burton Mesa, and La Prísima, all key players in managing wildfire and building community relations to enhance wildfire preparedness for your community. Next slide. So here we have a map of the, all of the fires that have happened in recorded history at least. There are, of course, fires that happened before we started mapping out fires, but these are all of the fires that are in Lompoc Valley or were in Lompoc Valley historically and that are on the exterior of the valley. You can see that the city of Lompoc hasn't had a huge history of fire, which is great, but the valley itself has. And the valley itself actually, 85% of it approximately, is very high or high fire hazard severity. So building wildfire preparedness, having these plans in place, connecting with community to make sure that your interests and needs and perspectives on how to build wildfire preparedness for your community are considered, is a really key piece of ensuring that whatever wildfire happens, we've done all we can and we're ready. So our timeline, so this is what we will ultimately produce. You'll see, or maybe you can't see, I know it's a bit of an eye test, I apologize, but we will be required to have the Board of Supervisor chair's signature. We'll be required to have county fires' signature and also usually CAL FIRE's signature as sign-off for this document. And our timeline, and this is in process, all of, pretty much all of these are in process. We have our development team, but we're always open to suggestions and additions. I'm building our vulnerability map along with a consultant. And we, we plan to have focus groups. It's a really key part of this and that is the way that we are ensuring that community voices are a key piece of the development of this plan. We will have up to possibly more than eight focus groups for Lompoc Valley in the development process of this CWPP. And then continuing for the rest of this year, we will continue to have meetings with our development team and we will also build our map that shows the recommended or kind of requested fuel treatments that the community would like to see. And then into next year, we will, again, continue meetings. If you are on our development team, you know that there will be meetings in your future. And we will produce the final draft of the CWPP mid-next year is our hope. Here is our list of the organizations or administrations, I should say, that we work with, who are on our development team or who we've had meetings with if they don't have the capacity to meet with us as much as the development team will. And then, next, we have our community voices. These would be special interests, representatives from throughout the county and, of course, also throughout Lompoc Valley, who are part of this process. We would be open to recommendations for anyone who you did not see on that list. I know you only saw it for a millisecond, but please feel free to approach me and ask if I've heard from someone you think is a really key person to bring into the fold for this. And thank you very much.
Any questions? Councilor Bridge.
I'm just curious, so the plan that you produce here after lots of work, obviously, is it an enforcement document or an information document?
What was the first word you said besides information?
Enforcement. Does it have enforcement requirements?
Yeah.
Or is it for use by the fire department for information?
Excellent question. We are completely non-regulatory. Of course, as I mentioned, some of our partners do have elements of regulatory work that they do, the fire department. We also are working with the sheriff's office and also the police department, Lompoc City Police. But we have no regulatory role and this document will have no regulatory role. Good question.
Councilor Ball.
I'll just a quick question. I noticed that you had a public meeting, I think, July 2025? Is that on one of the slides?
That was an estimated timeframe, but I do think we'll have a, a public meeting around that time.
And how will we find out about that or know about that?
We, I will probably talk with your amazing city clerk and also Chief Fallon. Chief Fallon has also put in a good word for us, so to speak, to get us here today. So I'll probably rely on them. Thank you in advance.
I know there's lots of people that are, you know, not necessarily overly concerned, but know that we are, certain areas of town are somewhat risky. So I know they want to have their voice heard and want to be participating in that conversation. So as long as we know when that's happening, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you for that thought. That is excellent to hear and we will make sure you all know about it.
And our PAO is right behind you, Emily's right there as well, so.
Oh, yes. Also, Emily will definitely be part of that. Thank you, Emily.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
City Manager Report. If we could real, if we could first, maybe, we have some visitors here.
Sure.
I'm going to call them up. The candidates for Flower Festival Queen are here. I'd ask them if they wanted to come up and say a few words or, I know it's manager's report, but we're managing.
I think it's with good cause, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pauline Chewie and I am with the Lompoc Valley Festival Association along with Sue Beltran. I've been working with these girls for the past three years and we, this year, we have eight candidates running for Flower Festival Queen. And I have to tell you that the judges are going to have a really, really hard time this year because they are all exceptional, wonderful, beautiful ambassadors for Lompoc. And we have three of them here today and they're each going to come in and share a little bit about themselves.
Welcome.
Good evening, Lompoc. My name is Madison Coff. I am proudly sponsored by the Employee Development Association, which I have the honor of also being a part of and because I work for the city of Lompoc as a lifeguard at the Aquatic Center. I'm currently a senior at Cabrillo High School and I will be graduating in a couple of weeks and will be continuing my education at Cal Poly Slow as an early childhood development major to pursue my dream career as a teacher. At Cabrillo High School, I am involved in the National Honor Society and Associate Suited Body, holding a position as Secretary of my senior class. Additionally, I was a part of Cabrillo Cheer and Swim Team for all four years of my high school. Outside of school, I try to attend all community events, volunteer however I can, and spend time with my family. I decided to pursue being a Flower Festival Queen candidate because I wanted to have the opportunity to unify my community and be a role model for young children within our community. So far, being a Flower Festival Queen candidate has been one of the most special experiences of my life. It taught me to be confident, but also the beauty of representing something bigger than myself. Growing up in Lompoc taught me the value of community, hard work, and staying true to who I am, which shaped me into someone who leads with heart and hometown pride. This ongoing experience not only helped me connect more deeply with my community, but it gave me the chance to grow alongside an incredible group of girls. I am grateful for the memories I've created and continue to create, the friendships I've made, and the chance to represent the heart of Lompoc. I'd like to introduce all of you to the parade of the Flower Festival on the 28th in the morning and the Flower Festival itself on the 26th through 29th. It'll be full of fun events and rides and it'll be located at Ryan Park. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valen Solorio. I'm 16 years old and I'm currently a scholar at Lompoc High School. I'm also part of Lompoc High's Cheer and Palm Team. This season, I got the opportunity to be a team captain as well as a member of the competition teams. I'm proud to say we took home first place at every single competition we went to. Let's go Braves! In my free time, I love to dance, take my dogs, Milo and Wit Nicky on walks, and spend time with the people I love most. I'm proudly sponsored by American Legion Post 211. American Legion proudly stands for their mission statement of veterans strengthening America by advocating for veterans, supporting their families, and by promoting patriotism and citizenship. But for me, this isn't just a post. This is a family that's made me feel so loved. I thank the Lord every single day for allowing me to have the best support system behind me. My favorite thing about Lompoc is how supportive our community is, whether it's showing up for sports, supporting our local youth, or even just coming together for fundraisers. There's a real sense of pride in where we come from and that pride continues to inspire me. That's why one of my biggest hopes is to be a leader of our local youth, our future leaders of Lompoc. I want to, I want to help inspire them to embrace their individuality, pursue their passions, and let them know that anything is possible if you put your mind to it. During my candidacy, I've helped organize several events, including weekly bake sales, a golf tournament, and a community barbecue. These events were just about raising money. They were about bringing the people together and giving back. I'm so blessed to be able to have the opportunity to run for Flower Festival Queen because it has opened up so many doors. It's allowed me to connect with our community on a deeper level and understand the hearts of our people, which is what I cherish most. So I'd like to invite you all to the Flower Festival, June 26th through 29th, with the parade being on the 28th. So thank you for listening, listening to me today and thank you, Lompoc, for being a community that continues to inspire me daily. Have a blessed rest of your night. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Audrey Sparks. I am honored to be sponsored by the Lompoc Elks Lodge, number 2274. I'm a senior at Cabrillo High School. I have cheered all four years, both sideline and on the CIF championship team, competition team. I am also a part of the Associated Student Body, National Honor Society, National Arts Honor Society, and Design Associates. On June 5th, I will be graduating a part of the Legion of Academic Merit for having over a 4.0 GPA. The Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks is an organization that has been running for over 150 years and, like, overall, having almost 2,000 lodges in communities across the United States. The mission is to promote the welfare and happiness of its members along with the surrounding communities. As more than 750,000 members promoting charity, justice, brotherly love, and fidelity. Our Lodge, number 2274, is established in 1963. It works with disabled youth, supports vets, and has made strides in drug awareness. Members consistently have supported me and I'd like to thank them for donating at my bake sales, well, dessert bars, buying raffle tickets, and buying pre-sale tickets for the barbecue I just had Saturday, May 17th. Talking to the members has helped me come out of my shell and has forced me to work on my sales pitch also. I strive to represent the Elks and demonstrate the Elks' share and Elks' care, and I also hope to see you all on the sides of the Flower Festival Parade and around the park. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I, one reason I asked you guys to come is we'll practice as one, but also to help promote the Flower Festival, which is probably Lompoc's largest, biggest event. It's been going on for quite a few years. I know my daughter was a Queen candidate and, how many do you have? Daughters, grand, yeah, three. Councilor Starbuck got three out of the play, so. She has been a, a large part of the community and thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor, and good luck to you guys.
Top that, top that, City Manager. Top that. It was supposed to be at the end, but I don't want the big finish.
I just want to take a moment to recognize our Public Works Department, especially our fleet and Facilities Manager. You know, he's, he's only been here a little while, but he's been able to master his budget, find some resources, and fix some trip hazards, so I'm pretty proud of that. I want to thank them.
Next slide. I don't know if anybody got a chance to make it to the Senior Health Expo, but wow, there's a ton of people there. I didn't know it was so popular. It was good to see the turnout there and thank Parks and Rec and everybody who helped put that together and everybody came out and participated. That was good to see. Next slide. We were going to be starting a new skills-based program, the Aquatic Center, as of May 13th. We will be rolling out a revamped swim lesson program. It'll be based upon skill levels versus ages, so if you want to incur, you know, increase your skill levels, it's a good program. We're also going to be doing swim instructors. That'll be June 13th through the 16th. This will help people be prepared for being an instructor. Those dates will be, 16th will be 4:00 to 6:30. Saturday, the 14th will be 9:00 AM to 3:00, and then Friday will be 5:00 to 8:00. And that's for 16-year-olds and it's a $30 charge, but if you get hired on as an instructor, they'll waive the fee. Good opportunity. I wanted to remind everybody that the 20th Annual Parks and Rec Golf Tournament, that's with the Kiwanis for youth scholarships, will be kicking off on Friday, the 30th. It's a great event. I think they're starting at 11:00, shotgun at 12:30, got a lot of great things, lunch, dinner orders, and raffle, awards, mulligans, a lot of fun. And if you want to be a sponsor, just looking for sponsors, $150 for a tee, $650 a tee plus four members, and it costs 125 per person, 65 if you're a member of the Mission Club. Want to remind everybody that Memorial Day holiday will be, have some closures throughout Lompoc City, the City Hall, the library, the landfill, and that'll be this Monday, May 26th. Trash, recycling, and green waste will be delayed a day, but the Aquatic Center will be open, so we'll give you something to do. Want to let everybody know that we'll be having a meeting here on Caltrans on May 29th. Right here at 6:00 to 7:00. We'll be discussing Route Highway 246 and Route 1. And basically, the replacement of the Robinson Bridge. In addition to the bridge replacement, there'll be some projects that include pavement repairs, sidewalk enhancements, and upgrades on signs. And it's a good opportunity to talk to Caltrans and give your input and find out what they're doing. Next Tuesday, on the 27th, we'll be having a special budget meeting. Workshop will be right here, City Hall. Like I said, May 27th, we're doing 5:15 and 7:15. We'll be heading, yeah, go over some goals and it's a good opportunity for everybody to learn what we're doing. I think I had a couple more slides. Here, I wanted to just give an upgrade, update to the council. We did Phase 1 and Phase 2, some encampment resolutions. We worked with the county, actually, the county actually took the lead on this. We did those two areas, it's next to the Bridge House, and we found about 10 encampments out of those. We did outreach and we got about seven of them to go into program, so that's a, that's a good thing. Those long-term solutions. If you go to the next slide, we're going to be doing another phase, Phase 3 and 4, which is a little bit further down the river, next to River Park, and we'll be working on that through May. We should have that resolved by May. We'll be doing the same thing, some outreach there. And finally, I just wanted to take, and if you notice in the lobby, they have a lot of stuff going on for Public Works. It's the Public Works Week from May 18th through the 24th. I want to recognize those. This year, the national theme is people, purpose, and presence. It reminds us that people work professionals and guide by clear purpose and much of what the, the work goes unnoticed, but we really appreciate what they do and they, they definitely have a purpose and a present and enjoy the stuff out there. Some swag out there you can grab and take home. And that's all I have for today, Mayor.
I had a quick question about what's going on with a lot of these e-bicycles around and stuff. They're on sidewalks and such. Do you have anything you can report on any of that this time or maybe your chief can? Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Bicycles, e-bike, or just a regular pedal bike, bicycle are subject to the rules of the road. They have to obey by the same rules. They have to stop at stop signs, stop at stoplights. When the officers aren't handling other calls for service, they focus on those problems and they try to address them the best way they can. But again, they're tied to those calls for service that are higher priority. So we are addressing them. The e-bikes, there's three classifications of them. The first are basically pedal and then the battery kicks in and the maximum speed of 20 miles an hour. The highest classification is the, goes as high as 28 miles an hour. So, you know, it's, it's on our radar. We've already seized some of those e-bikes and removed some of the problems from the community and are holding those people accountable for those. But once again, it's really what happens in between the higher priority calls for service we have.
Very good. A lot of people are asking what's going on and I said you guys are addressing it. I know you, I've heard you got a couple of them off the street already, so thank you with that and tell the people to be patient and the people are doing the wrong thing, watch out, right?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Any quick questions for the City Manager? Everyone, real fast, the AMI meters? A lot of people are asking if that was on the list and it was going to be on, but it is off, so until the future, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we'd like to do a little bit of research on that and we'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. The AMI meters. So that brings us to the consent calendar. So we have, oh, we got a lot of good things. So do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? We've got approval of the minutes for March 18th, 2025, regular meeting, and March 18th, 2025, as well as a special meeting. We've got approval and ratification expenditures, payroll of $2 million. payroll of $2 million, a voucher of $1.3 million, another voucher for April 21st of $1.9 million. It takes a lot of money to run the city. And a special adoption of ordinance, 172625. This is the final reading. Correct, City Attorney, on that?
Yes, that's correct. It'll take effect in 30 days.
30 days?
Well, the ordinance will take effect in 30 days, but then there's a 60-day waiting period for the new fees to take effect.
Okay, so 90 days.
Yep.
And this, this is a potential $80 million stimulus to the economy in a reverse way, a reduction of fees. So, probably one of the largest things any council has done to stimulate economic development in our community. So, number four, approval memorandum of agreement between San Barbara County Office of Emergency Management regarding activation of Ready SBC Alert System and access to and use of Emergency Zone Mapping Solution. And then adoption of Resolution Number 675025, approving the declaration of nuisance and abatement order for weeds and debris. And I'm not on the list this year. Councilmember Starbuck, I know. Number six, adoption of Resolution Number 675125, declaring the council's intention to levy assessments for fiscal year 2526. Plenary proven and engineers report and provide notice in public hearing for the park maintenance and pool city assessment, District Number 2002-01. That allows us to do a pool assessment, pay for the big pool and a couple other things, correct? And number seven, award of RFP Number 3049 for the implementation of Water Tank Asset Management Program to Utility Services Company Incorporated in the amount of $815,886. Direct the City Manager to execute the contract. Seven items. Anybody on council want to pull any of those items? Are there any quick questions? Councilmember Starbuck?
Just a question on four. Chief Allen, Fiscal Impact here says the JNS program is financed through Homeland Security Grant and for four years, and will have no financial obligation for four years. What is the obligation expected to be in the fifth year?
Yes, sir. So, the Homeland Security Grant was good, as you said, for, for the next four years, fully funded. There is no discussion exceeding the four years right now amongst the area county fire chiefs. That would be an item that we would bring back to you as we're approaching the fifth year. So, as of now, we're paid through the fourth, and then we'll come back to you for the fifth, should that be something that we're interested in.
So, we're not committing to anything beyond four, then?
No, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Ridge?
I'd like to pull item six, please.
Item number six?
Please, that's it.
Okay, so those items that will be pulled will be heard at the latter part of the meeting. Subdivision will be addressed immediately before that second oral communication near the end of the meeting. So, do I have a motion on the other six items? One through seven, less six? But assume that's motion approved by Councilmember Vega and a second by Councilmember Wall. Go ahead and vote. Patience, be all right. The horse race here. And it passed 5-0. All right. So, now we have another presentation from Community Development of the projects funded by Community Development Block Grant Funds. Chanel, come on down.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and members of our community. My name is Chanel Hovay, and I'm the city's Community Development Program Manager. Tonight, I am here at council's request to present a vision for future CDBG funding that the city hopes to receive for the council-approved five-year consolidated plan for ADA capital project improvements. For background purposes, the Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG, its primary purpose is to develop communities for low and moderately low-income persons by providing a decent, safe, and suitable living environment. Oops. Can we please go back? Important funding requirements to note are CDBG funds may not replace any state or city-funded functions. Funding must benefit low-income persons. Of the total grant, only 20% may be used for admin, 15% for human services, and the balance is to be used for capital projects with expenditures that are not in compliance to be paid back to HUD from the city's general fund. During the last council meeting, council approved the CDBG consolidated plan, which is a broad five-year plan of how the city intends to use funds toward eligible projects based on community needs and feedback. The approved plan states capital project funding will be used for accessibility improvements in connection with the Americans with Disability Act, ADA. An ADA project is an eligible use of CDBG funds for benefits a category of people that are presumed to be low-income, as determined by HUD. This type of project will additionally address Lompoc needs and feedback received in the program's public needs assessment. HUD has just released the city's entitlement allocation for fiscal year 2526 that equates to $262,641 of funding for the city-approved ADA capital improvement project. The additional, in addition to that, city council also approved program income for a grand total of $350,744. So, now, the answer to council's request, provide a vision of the projects in connection with the council's approved five-year consolidated plan. So, as you can see here, for the previous years, the funding was already approved by council. It will continue to complete the following approved projects, JM Park, Ryan Park, and Pioneer Park. After completing these projects, any funding not expended will roll over to projects for the next fiscal year. The new fiscal year, that will begin on July 1st, that was included in the con plan as the action plan for ADA capital improvements of $350,744, will be allocated to projects identified in the capital improvement plan as approved by council. Once council approves its priorities and capital improvement plan, CDBG funds will be supplement, will supplement other funding to complete projects included in the CIP, things like Ryan Park ADA stage and restrooms. For fiscal year 26 through 30, the city has not received CDBG funding, nor the dollar amount for these years. The consolidated plan presentation was based on HUD's recommendation to use the current year's funding over the next five years as an example. The con plan is a broad plan with the city's vision to use funding for CDBG ADA eligible projects. Staff has identified projects in the current budget and the CIP for council's approval. CDBG funding will be included in capital projects as they are presented to council for approval. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for this time. I am available for questions.
Councilmember Vega?
Chanel, thank you so much. Does this include all the expenditures? I guess it's one of my questions here for CDBG funding. I guess one of my questions here, and I'll get right to it, is the Down Payment Assistance Program. Is that part of the expenditure process that's here?
No, that is separate funding.
It's a separate funding issue, but is it part of your budget, your CDB budget?
No, it is a separate funding altogether. It does not include CDBG.
Could you explain that a little bit so that people here will understand? Because when they hear CDBG, it's, it's four letters, and it seems like it's all-encompassing. So, maybe there's a little bit of a difference there, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So, CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. These funds can be used for capital projects that benefit low-income persons. It can also be used for human services that also benefit low-income persons, and a small portion of it can be used toward admin to be able to administrate all of the services. The First-Time Home Buyers Program is under a separate pot of money, and it's an awesome program. It helps first-time home buyers and persons that are, that make at least 120% of our area median income. Lots of our city employees qualify for this program. This program will be up and running again after the new year, after June 1st. I'm super excited about it. It's one of my favorite programs. Is there something else more?
Yeah, and the reason I wanted you to bring this up is you guys are handling quite a few projects within your realm there. So, I don't want that to be, to slip by because you guys are also in charge in handling the expenditures of those Down Payment Assistance Funds. Somehow, I don't know how you guys are doing it, but you know, it seems like a lot of work, okay? But at the same time, it's, I'd like a little bit more transparency on the funds that are available to council so that we can put it out to our constituents. So, there's some people that claim that, you know, it's here, and then it's gone, and I get it, okay? It's, it's a pretty popular program. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Ridge?
That was an excellent presentation. Thank you. Have the playgrounds that we've seen produced in the parks, wonderful job, have they come out of the CBDG grants?
Yes, I'm very proud to say we have a lot of projects that have been completed with CDBG funding. As you've seen, one of them is the Beatty Park Playground, which is the county's first all-inclusive playground. And now, we have other local jurisdictions falling suit. We've also completed, like, the lighting over at JM Park for the kids to play baseball at night. That was the city of Lompoc CDBG program, along with lots of bathrooms here, like at Pioneer Park, the ADA bathroom. We've done, let's see.
With a specific, Thompson Park was also another park that was done for the CDBG funds.
So, are those out of the 641, or is that additional funding?
No, those, the ones that I just mentioned just now, those are items that have been already completed. That 641 that we're looking at right there, that is something that council has already proved in the past for these particular projects. So, it's the JM Park CDBG ADA Bathroom and Concession Stand. That project, even though you're just seeing it there, that was a two-part project. So, we paid for the CDBG program to have it built off-site. We just had it installed, but it's not really installed. It's kind of just sitting there. We're still paying for, like, the sewer and trying to get all that invoicing and all that work done. And there's other funding that's going into that project, but CDBG is a big part of that. And then for Ryan Park?
I'm just trying to understand. Is, is this the entirety of the CBD funding? Because I don't see some of these other projects listed in the previous year. And I'm reaching to see, is there another group of CDBG funding that's not being included in this vision?
No, you are seeing all of the CDBG funding. Maybe you are referring back to my last presentation where it looked like it was about $900,000?
No, I'm not doing a correlation of the numbers. I'm just trying to get a complete understanding.
So, this is all of CDBG's funding. So, that 641 is the entitlement in the items, the funding that we have available from previous year funding that we're currently working on, that was already approved. And then that 350 is the new money that's coming from the feds along with our program income together for this new current year.
Okay, so I'm sorry to be so slow here.
It's okay.
The JM Concession Stand, is that the first item on that 641?
No. So, those three items, JM Park, Ryan Park, and Pioneer Park are all being completed with that funding of the $641,000.
Okay.
And then any funding that's left over, it just moves to the next year.
One of the things I feel like I've heard before is that because of the requirement to service the LMI, the low, medium income, that some of our parks don't qualify.
That is correct.
And one of the parks I'm concerned about is Riverbin Park. And I think I was previously told because of that, it doesn't qualify because, however you draw the map around it. However, I've done a little bit of research on that, and what I've been able to determine is if we, I believe the main use of that park is the soccer. Or it's a significant component of it, let's say it that way. And Lompoc as a whole probably has a pretty large component of LMI. And I believe if we take a survey, which I'm sure the soccer organization would be happy to do, we could demonstrate fairly clearly that that park was used by a large percentage of LMI. And then we could get that park included in the assessments. I'm not saying take precedence over this. I'm just saying we can get it. It might take us a year to get that survey done, or the soccer folks. But I'm wondering if that's something we couldn't work with this ASO organization, get that survey completed, and then have it in our quiver, so to speak. So, when we come up for future assessments, we can say, yes, this does qualify, or for other things that come along. Is that something that...
So, you are correct. There are parks that do not qualify, but there are ways that we can do certain aspects to the parks or improvements to the park to make it qualify. One of those ways is what you've already approved One of those ways is what you've already approved is doing ADA improvements. So for the next five years, if we wanted to include um the Riverbend Park, it would have to be an ADA improvement to that park, and it would have to be included in your approved CIP.
And it has to be ADA because we've self-imposed that rule?
Um, because you have already approved that with the consolidated plan is the first thing. And the second thing is because Riverbend is not in a low-income area, so it only would qualify if we're doing something like an ADA improvement.
So I obviously didn't communicate well. I believe it does qualify for an LMI. And to accomplish that, we would have to do a survey. And we would have to demonstrate that the large percentage of the population that's using that park falls in the LMI. Which, those numbers are pretty high. I think it's like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Uh, the Councilmember Bridge, um, we would still have to identify what sort of project we would be doing at Riverbend Park, and it would have to have an ADA um act, or a nexus. If it doesn't have an ADA nexus, we wouldn't be able to use those funds for the project. So we wouldn't be able to go and remove turf or, or um put lights.
Let's uh take this offline then, cause I don't understand the nexus of the ADA. CDBGA grants are not just ADA, unless we have self-enforced.
So you are correct, but because we, because you, the council, have already approved the con plan for the next five years, we cannot do anything other than ADA to use the funding for ADA improvements.
We did that in the last session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I would like to make a council request that that come back. Because I, perhaps I'm the only one that doesn't recognize that. But what I was just told is we approved only ADA use for CDBG. Did, did the rest of the council understand that? Okay, well then I'll stand corrected.
And as, as well, there's a time constraint on that on the filing and such. So I think it's, it's not something that, that's available to be a redo on that one. So there was timing, when was the due date?
Um, as, as said in the last meeting, we would be on time if we would have had it approved at least by today. But so I was able to bring it back today for you. And that I did not want to lie to you, there are ways to have it extended, but those are things that you do not really want to do in order to get HUD funding.
I understood that, and I, I understand we were doing the year. But I did not understand, I was committing this council and the city, for the next five years, we can't do anything but ADA. And um, I'll go back and research that a little bit more, but I don't believe that that was clear to me.
Councilmember Bridge, the reason why we do and we put like a broad umbrella, like use ADA, is because we're having to give a vision to HUD for the next five years. If we, we try to keep it broad so we can do many things and work on many projects, different places. So we can still work over there, it would just have to have some nexus to ADA.
Well, I, I understand what you're telling me. I uh, again, we got trapped in this, we have to do this tonight. And um, and now you're telling me what I approved I didn't understand, cause I was rushed. And um, so, you know, I'll, I'll lick my wounds and go back and research it. Thank you.
Councilmember Starber.
Some of these parks that are used by people outside of our community, I'll use an example. Um, rural area, Mission Hills, Vandenberg Village, is there a way we could get some of the CDBG funding out of the county to help us with that?
There may be a way to do that. On the history that I've been here, I haven't seen that. But there may be a way.
I was just saying, you know, if they've got extra and they're, they're using our facilities, maybe.
I, I have reached out with the county on, on projects to see if they, we got some items in their park master plan, which is one of the things you have to do, is try to get things in their master plan to even identify, to try to get them, cause we do provide the, a massive amount of recreational opportunities for Vandenberg Village, Mesa Oaks, and Mission Hills, and we don't receive the property tax money to do that, so. I'm trying to reach out to get that. Uh, Councilmember Vega.
Riverbend Park, ADA, wow. That's a big one there. You know what I mean? Those seem like there should be something we can do. I mean, can we use it to plug up gopher holes for ADA? Or put ramps on the outhouses? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not trying to be funny here, but I'm saying that it's pretty underdeveloped. So I'm just wondering, I think Councilmember Bridge does have a point here, maybe we should take another look at. Yes, for five years, but another nexus to see if there's any money that we can improve at all, you know? I mean, you can't just say no. Uh, it's so primitive, there's just outhouses and gopher holes out there. I mean, it's just, it seemed like there should be some sort of improvement, whether you want to call it ADA or not. Uh, but anyway, just a thought, okay?
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another staff presentation, Management Finance Director to provide a presentation on the city's enterprise reimbursement cost allocation, history, and methodology.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public and staff. We've got all kinds of staff here, thank you for coming tonight. My name is Chrissy Donnelly, I'm the Management Services Director. And this is a, a presentation in response to a request made by Mr. Mosby at our last budget workshop. Um, he had asked that we bring back um information on the enterprise reimbursement plan and the methodologies that we use. Um, we were looking at doing this during the budget workshop next week. Um, but it's a pretty big topic, and I didn't want us to be at the budget workshop until midnight. So tonight, we're going, the purpose of our discussion is to divine, to find some key fiscal concepts, explain the scope and intent of the enterprise reimbursement plan, clarify staff and management service director administrative role, and reaffirm council's policy and oversight authority. We're going to address the basis, the methodology, transparency, and historical applications of the enterprise reimbursement plan, and provide context for why reimbursements are appropriate and necessary. Just outlining the, the agenda, we're going to go over some definitions, roles and responsibilities, history. We're going to look at the 2016 report recap, that was originally published in March 2016. It is available on our website, and I have the link showing on the presentation. We're going to talk about the process of reassessing the implementation of the enterprise reimbursement plan, and then look at some what-if questions, ending with what our recommendation from staff is. So I, I just want to kind of apologize upfront, there is going to be a lot of talking points here. I want to establish a foundation, I want to be able to on record kind of go over the whole history of this so that we can have it all together in one place. Um, so bear with me, we're going to go through definitions, and then there will be a time for questions at the end. Direct cost allocation, this is a accounting term. It's an assignment of costs that can be clearly and exclusively linked to a specific fund or department. Indirect cost allocation is a distribution of shared administrative costs and support costs across multiple departments or funds. Inter-fund reimbursement is the recovery of actual costs for services provided by one fund to another. The inter-fund reimbursement is really the mechanism which, in which we charge for direct cost allocations. An inter-fund transfer is a budgeted movement of resources from one fund to another, and it's often for policy or subsidy purposes. And an inter-fund budget adjustment or transfer, this is what it, what we do during the, the budget cycle. It's a council-approved change to the adopted budget after the fact. It's required for new appropriations or for major deviations. Just talking a little bit about what an inter-fund reimbursement is versus a transfer. A reimbursement is a payment for actual services rendered, whereas a budgetary transfer is a movement for policy or subsidy purposes. One is, a reimbursement is more of a, a charge, whereas a transfer is just a movement of money. Um, a general transfer is what we do in actual accounting, where we are, it's a calculated accounting entry to enter in what has already been approved in the budget. And reimbursements, like I, I was mentioning on the first one, that are cost-based and transactional. I'm going to go over a couple of sets of other fees that are not reemb- reimbursements. So franchise fees, franchise fees you may have heard of. Um, they are paid by private utilities for right-of-way use. Um, that, when I, when I refer to ROE, that stands for right-of-way. Revenue, they are, franchise fees are revenue to the general fund, they are not cost-based, and they are not charged to Long Polk Utilities. Utility u- user tax is a general tax on utility use by residents or businesses. It needs to be approved by voters under Prop 218. It is revenue for the general fund, but it is not linked to cost of service. And again, it's not currently charged to Long Polk Utilities. And our final um set is property tax. Property tax is a tax based on assessed property values, it's collected by counties and redistributed to cities, schools, and special districts. Core general fund support for services like police, fire, parks, and libraries is provided for through property tax. And property tax is not charged to Long Polk Utilities. Some things to remember here, um, enterprise funds, our city enterprise funds do not pay property tax on the infrastructure, on the pipelines, substations, buildings, and so forth. They were not charged property tax. But the enterprise funds still require the public services that property tax would otherwise pay for. So what that does is it causes a, um, it causes a structural imbalance. Um, the general fund provides services to enterprise operations without direct tax revenue in return. So enterprise funds differ from the taxes that I just mentioned, because they're not a tax. Re reimbursements are, are not revenue generating measures, they are cost recovery for actual services rendered. It's not considered an inter-fund transfer or a subsidy. And I would argue that it is legally required because of Prop 218. Enterprise funds can only be charged for services that they use, and they should not be subsidized by property tax-backed funding. So if the general fund is subsidizing enterprise funds, then that, that means that property tax-backed funding is, is subsidizing a utility. Enterprise funds, enterprise reimbursement is service-based, it's calculated using measurable impact, such as call for service data or facility usage, and it is a reimbursement for measurable city services. So looking a little bit at the legal and accounting framework, one of the municipal code, this is section two dot sixteen dot zero three zero. I don't know the legal, the right way, is I call that two sixteen thirty, or two hu- two thou- two hundred and sixteen thousand, whatever it is, it's that one. Management Services Director, um, powers and duties. The Management Services Director is charged with the responsibility for the accounting and other financial activities of this city. It goes on to, um, quote, different sections. It has to do with originally, in, in those sections, um, the city clerk was the one who was given all the financial authority. And then in here, it's transferred to the Management Services Director. Let's see, let's go to the next slide. Um, and Mr. Mosby, you had asked about municipal code three dot twenty-four dot sixty. Um, in, in, um, talking about transfers. And wanted to point out, um, I did look at that, and I had read it, I just didn't know it by number. Um, changes in our adopted budget, so after the, its adoption, the budget may be changed in the following manner. It goes on to explain ways that transfers can happen and the way that the budget can, can be adjusted after the fact. But all of the transfers that it's talking about in three point twenty-four point oh six, four sixty, um, is within an adopted budget context, not within the um cost allocation programs. So moving on, um.
Do you have any more of that, three twenty-four sixty, the other parts of it?
I can pull it up. Um, I'll pull it up at the end. So government code three, three, seven, two, zero, two. It, this is, all of this, and I just kind of, kind of go through this. These are basically saying that we need to make auditive, audible, and lawful payments. Um, checks, payroll warrants are included in the approved budget and not need to be audited prior to payment. It's just talks, there's a lot of legal and accounting um rules. One of those rules is that budget adoption is legal authorization to expend funds. And so, in, in addition to that, there are, have been many court rulings in relationship to reimbursement funds that require documented cost of service approach. GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association, and their best practices recommend consistent documented allocation of shared costs. And Prop 218 requires that enterprise fees reflect the actual documented cost of services received. A little bit more on the profit, Prop 218, it requires that enterprises, enterprise rates reflect proportional actual costs, that there is no cross-subsidation, subsid- oh my goodness, subsidization from utility ratepayers to the general fund. Prop 218 creates transparency and fairness across funds, and ensures that ratepayers pay only for services that they receive, no more, no less. And it protects the city from legal risk. I'll go on to the next slide. So some of the roles and responsibilities for council versus staff. And this is just, a, a council adopts the annual budget, and of, that includes cost recovery assumptions. And um, council also reviews and approves the methodologies and the policy direction. Staff is, goes and, does the work of implementing the technical calculations based upon council's adopted plan. My staff is responsible to make sure that, that we're consistent, that we apply accounting rules fairly and in legal compliance. But we report our results transparently during budget workshops or by request. And, and we have documentation available that, in our, in our offices. If you have desire to come and look at the cost allocation plan, for example, it's on our website. We're looking at preserving checks and balances while also trying to avoid operational delays. Talking about the, my responsibilities as Management Services Director. Um, it was interesting going in and, and looking at what exactly does the code say? And it's actually pretty, pretty general. It says that the Management Service Director is hereby charged with responsibility for the accounting and other financial activities of the city. And that's about all that it speaks to, um, in our code. But industry standard interpretation is that the Management Service Director is delegated authority to develop and maintain the cost allocation plan, calculate indirect costs, recommend or implement inter-fund changes, and monitor and adjust those charges. I said char- I said changes, but I meant charges. So that's just a little bit of a foundation. Um, history and the report. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about the enterprise reimbursement plan report itself. Um, it was initiated in 2016, or the whole, it was commissioned, it, I believe in 2015, and then the report came out in 2016, to replace what was a flat five percent transfer model. And the report focused on three categories, public safety, use of government facilities, and right-of-way maintenance. It reflects services that are rendered by the general fund to enterprise funds, and it apprise, it applies to all enterprise operations, water, wastewater, electric, solid waste, transit, airport, and communications. So its purpose is to ensure that ratepayer-funded operations reimburse the general fund for measurable services received. It is separate from the city's electric rate of return transfer. It's also separate from the city's overhead cost, cost allocation plan. So the electric rate of return or pilot is what we've referred to that in the past before, is a transfer that is formula-driven. It is based on the rate of return calculation on the value of electric, PPE, which is um plant and equipment, um, working capital allowance and established prior to, it was established prior to Prop 26, which means it's grandfathered into the policy. Um, the cost allocation plan addresses administrative support costs such as finance, HR, IT, and the cap applies to all funds. Versus the enterprise reimbursement, which is specific cost recovery that applies only to enterprise funds. Now I, I inherited this report when I started as Management Services Director in 2022. And so my focus has been on managing the past, not rebuilding the past. The original enterprise reimbursement cost allocation plan was completed in February 2026 by HF and H Consultants, and used as a foundation for enterprise reimbursement fund re- enterprise reimbursement, inter-fund reimbursements, go, try to say that three times fast, um, since 2017, 2019 budget cycle. The report was developed using the then-current data and established indefensible methodology, which in was intended to align with Prop 218 and court rulings. The report was initially sent to committee by city council, and then used as a basis for the 2017, nineteen, and then future budgets. And it is referenced on page, I believe that's Roman numeral seven, of 2017 to 2019 budget book. The report has since served as a foundational reference tool to ensure enterprise fund reimburses the general fund for specific measurable impacts. So as Management Services Director, it is my responsibility to assess the continued validity of the report's assumptions, apply updates using standard financial tools such as CPI and any other reasonable proxies, ensure current-year calculations remain legal, proportional, and, and defensible. I want to be clear, though, that I'm not here tonight to dissect or defend every data point from a report that was written nearly ten years ago. And it was approved by two prior finance directors. Um, my role is to ensure that we're using it responsibly and updating it appropriately, the same way we adjust salaries or by CPI or update depreciation schedules. I, I, I believe that rebuilding every financial foundation from scratch is neither practical or necessary unless there's a specific legal. or necessary unless there's a specific legal or audit reason to do so. So history, the methodology for looking at the report, the public safety, government facilities, and right of way maintenance. So for public safety, the report methodology went over allocated, was allocated based on the share of total property value of public and private, as well as the replacement cost and C P I adjustments. It excludes unrelated services, and it resulted on the report in a one point oh eight million dollar allocation, which was about seven percent of the total public safety costs. Government facilities report methodology was on the return on investment and depreciation recovery for city facilities used by the enterprises. So this would be things like City Hall, Corporate Yard, and other locations that are shared facilities. Allocation is based on square footage, and it resulted in about six hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars annually. And then the right of way maintenance was based on sixty seven percent surface impact for vehicle, thirty three percent subsurface such as trenching, and and then in engineering terms that I don't understand, and the result was three point three million dollars allocated to the enterprises, which is about fifty four percent total of the right of way maintenance costs. Combined, the report allocation was five point oh eight million dollars, and it broke it down into two point nine five million to general fund. That would be the combination of the public ser-, public safety and the government facility portion, and two point one three million dollars to ROW. I have combined it on the general fund, the report did not. It just is, it was a mechanism for the calculation and the presentation. It is intended as a full cost recovery baseline. So in 2022, when I took over as Management Services Director, I was given the budget and all the accounting that we are, that are redoing, and I tried to get up to speed. I was involved with all the reporting of actuals and so forth, but some of these cost allocation things I hadn't been involved with. And so I made some observations in 2022. One was that the reimbursements that we were currently, that the general fund was receiving from the enterprises was three point oh eight million dollars. That was versus the five point oh eight that was in the study. And the amount that was being attributed to general fund versus to ROW was two point four five million into the general fund versus six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to ROW. There were two things that I, I saw that made me pause with that. One was that the percentages were off in comparison to the report percentages for the general fund versus ROW. It was, it looked to me like ROW should be getting more of that total dollar amount. And then the total amount was significantly lower, two million dollars lower than what the report was, and it was a 2016 report, and I was here in 2022. So I observed that under collection was part of some of the strain that we were seeing in the general fund and ROW operations. And so I did some calculation, and I came up with a budget correction strategy. I took the 2016 report values and adjusted those and realigned those with C P I. I used the existing study methodology and allocations as the base, and then I implemented, began to implement a phase correction to address the under charges. I also reinstated the transit reimbursement that was in the report. So the four-year catch-up plan, our targets by fiscal year 2026, 27, was to get to a total of six point five million dollars. That was, that's five point oh eight plus the C P I was, is six point five. It would be three point one to the general fund, and thirty, three point four million to ROW, which would get the percentages back in line with what the report had, had stated. And I do want to note that that six point five is the 2023 C P I number, because that's all that I had at the time. It is still below the, what is now at 2025, and adjusted six point nine million. And so I also noticed, or judged, that there was no way that we could go in 2022 from what we were at to 2023 in one year. So I looked at making a gradual phase in to limit any extreme operational disruption. And go ahead and try to read this. That's, that's the four-year catch-up plan. I'm going to look at this in two secs. We're going to, we've got a couple more slides. This is the first half, and this is 2016, seventeen, where it started, up to 2022, 23, and then it's a comparison with what the 2016 report without C P I is. I'm going to get out my little Dean's pointer here. You can see that in 2017, the total was about two point one million dollars. And then increased, it increased in eighteen and nineteen by nineteen percent and then two percent. And then in nineteen and twenty, it increased by seventeen percent in nineteen, twenty, and then stayed stable for four years. In 22, 23, actually, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. I'll look at 22, 23 on that one. Twenty two, 23, the total amount that was, was being contributed or charged to the enterprise funds was three point oh eight million dollars. And the C P I, the report was five point oh eight. So we looked at increasing 23, 24, and 24, 25 in incremental steps, a bigger jump in 23, 24, and then the average of fifteen percent, fif- fourteen, sixteen, and sixteen percent over the next three years. The purple is what we're looking at doing coming up in 25, 26, and 26, 27. And if you notice, this column here equals what the adjusted C P I was for 2023. If we were to match the 2020, 25 C P I, it would be this column, but we are not looking at doing this column. We're still five percent behind. So moving forward, I believe that we should continue our phase catch-up using C P I adjusted 2016 baselines. I'd like to refer, reaffirm our commitment to audit-ready legally sound methodology, and in doing so, I, I really think that it's time for us to commission a new reimbursement study in early 2026. Doing so would take the existing plan and would update it with a new, a new study. We would just start from scratch, really. It would reflect changes in operations, infrastructure, staffing, ensure compliance with current law, accuracy, and long-term defensibility. Now, on the what ifs, I have heard questions about why do we do this? Why do we have this enterprise reimbursement fund? I've heard various implications that we should potentially get rid of it. And so I wanted to look at what would happen if we eliminated this. The enterprise reimbursement plan supports the general fund by offsetting real cost for services used by enterprise operations. If this plan is removed, the general fund would have to absorb the shortfall. There would be no reduction in demand from the utilities. The utilities will still, still require the services that they're currently requiring. Go ahead with the next bullet. Without reimbursement, the reimbursement funding has to be diverted from core services, and most notably, those services are police and fire. Together, police and fire comprise ninety two percent of the salary and benefits costs of the top one hundred general fund-funded positions. So ROW would, would be, would lose six point two seven million, million dollars by annual, that's every two years. And our capital projects would decrease to less than one million dollars. So what is already low P C I, it would be unsustainable. If, in the general fund, the general fund would lose three point one one million dollars annually. If we were to look to do that, and in this upcoming budget, we would have to cut services immediately to cover the shortage. And even with cost-cutting options, cutting things around, it would be a devastating impact to primarily police and fire, and followed by parks. Without reimbursement, funding must be diverted from core services, and that, this is just a repeat of what I had, had said before, the most notably, police and fire. Of the top one hundred general fund-funded positions, ninety of them are police and fire. Police is equal to about nine million in salary and benefits a year. Fire is a little over five million in salary and benefits a year. Combined, that's fourteen point oh five million, ninety two percent of the actual salaries. The remaining ten positions, which are, cover one point two three million, span parks, planning, building, H R, library, and admin. And so that, all that statistics, but what does that mean? What, what, what is the ultimate impact? It means that we would need to find a way to cut three point one million dollars from the general fund, and it would primarily be reductions in staffing, because there's no way for us to tighten our belts by three point one million dollars. Doing a, a review of the salaries, that would be an estimated twenty one positions that would have to be eliminated. If we were to keep, and this is all hypothetical, because we, we haven't done this in the full analysis, but if we were to keep the same percentages that are in the current and, and eliminate according to percentage, it would be fifty eight percent, police would be twelve positions, one point seven million dollars. Thirty four percent fire, which would be six positions. Parks would be ninety, ninety nine thousand one position, and the other five percent would probably come from planning and admin at about a hundred and eighty seven million, a hundred and eighty seven thousand, sorry. So ultimately, this comes down to a question of priorities. City council has made it clear that they desire to put public safety first, and the enterprise reimbursement plan helps fund exactly that. And it's not new taxes, it's through a cost recovery. Removing this plan would undermine several things: the financial equity, budgetary integrity, and public safety stability. And I, I think that we can't credibly claim to prioritize public safety and simultaneously strip away the fiscal mechanism that helps fund it. So what is, what do I recommend? When our utility operations use public safety services or city-owned facilities, it's only fair that they reimburse the general fund for those costs. It's about equity for both taxpayers and rate payers, and about preserving the city's long-term fiscal integrity. It's about making sure that each fund pays its fair share, and it's, it's not about politics. We owe it to our residents to run a fair, transparent, and fiscally responsible city. So I, I recommend that we stay the course and follow the plan. ROW and general fund provide services in exchange for the charges. Wait, that's not right. General fund provides services in exchange for the charges. ROW, that's a, that's a, I was up late at night writing this slide. Charges are fairly calculated, legitimate, and defensible, and in addition to that, the report is almost ten years old. So I would say that it is time to commission a new report. I would, would have, would look at initiating the report in January or February of 2026, so that we could get it, review it, do, Chris, whatever we want to do with it, pick it apart, but make sure that it's done in time and ready for the 27, 29 budget. And that would be that the findings of the new report would be used in the new budget cycle. And that concludes my presentation. That was a lot of talking.
I have a few questions for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And unfortunately, I mean, you got thrown under the bus with this one, because we did have an ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committee met, and it came back, and recommendations and such were made, that a new study be done. And it was agreed, granted, not through ordinance or resolution, that it would not be increased until the new study was done. So I guess it went out to, to, to look for somebody to do new study, and nobody would do new study, because a lot of the things that they say were defensible, it was questionable how defensible they were, because there was a lot of litigations going on in, in different areas of the, of the enterprise reimbursement. That's why the numbers were frozen when you, when you came in at that certain level, because it was kind of agreed to, and I know there was a group that was looking at litigating the city on this, and everybody stayed, okay, we know, we understand the importance of this. But we also understand that when a reimbursement becomes a tax, it's a tax, call it what it is. And there was a number of areas that the council at that time was questioning. One was the amount of dollars being charged per square foot at City Hall for the rent, so to say. And not only that, but they were being charged replacement value, almost equal to the rent. So it was almost five dollars a square foot was being charged for the utilities to be in City Hall. So that was one of the areas. Another one was a big question about the right-of-way component in how wide the trenches really were, and how much really was. There was big discussion about that. We spent a lot of time over that, and we determined what the number was there was, was not correct. And we spent a lot of time on this, granted, it was six, seven years ago, and is always the concern, what was going to happen, what was going to happen? And we understand the city, the city needs the money. I get that. But one of the best ways to do it sustainably is to heal the city, which is one of the things we just did with the recent ordinance, to stimulate growth and development, which is what we need sustainably. We need to increase all of our revenues twenty, thirty, forty percent. There's no doubt. There's no doubt. We're struggling hard, and finance staff has to be very creative in coming up with these. The former city manager, Wy Miller, came up with this creative way of bringing revenue. And we, we had a lot of round and rounds about this. I mean, one is the questioning of, is it truly cost of service? If the service is already provided, as in the public safety support to the wastewater plant, is it not a tax if all of a sudden you're charging for services that are being paid for? So it is already being paid for. It was covered in the property tax. And the point of fact is that, you even hit it a little bit, is based on valuation of the facility is what we charge for the reimbursement, not on how many calls went out or anything else. So, and it was mentioned many times in the past, is, and when the consultant was here, the HF H consultant actually kind of deferred and referred to it as a tax, because we're basically on valuation, not really cost of service. And that was very complicated. I'm, I'm not looking at kicking the teeth. My whole point was to bring this forward. The public needs to understand, we need to heal this thing right. This is a looming potential nightmare. Oxnard had a huge lawsuit. Was it thirty two million dollars or something like that? I don't know what ended up finalizing with the settlement. We don't want to be in that position. And a lot of the stuff that was in there, and I think it was HF Edge did the same study for Oxnard, but we have to, I mean, and it's also another reason why we're coming back continuously raising utility rates. It's not really that the utilities directly themselves are costing more. It's when we see that we're six million, seven million dollars coming out of the utilities now, coming back to the re-, enterprise reimbursement aspect. And it's, it's a lot easier to get three people up here to, to agree to raise, increase a utility rate than to try to get a majority of the public to pass the tax. And it was, when the property tax was, or the new sales tax was passed, we had a chance at that time, because enterprise reimbursement was two to three million dollars. We had a chance at that time to backstaff that, go out and do the new study, and to see what was really going on. But we are in a precarious situation with this enterprise reimbursement. I know you, you alluded that it was defensible. Just remember, Charles Manson was defensible, somebody said too. So just be cautious about that. Many of these cases have been overturned and flipped on there, and we, we, if we had a judgment like Oxnard had, we would be in big trouble.
I, I, I understand that. I think that there are all, as many that have been found, not in compliance, there have been many more that have been found to be in compliance. And so I think that looking at the, the report itself, and, you know, I didn't come in and go back and review something that had been six years prior. I was handed the, the plan and the fact- I was handed the, the plan, and the fact that in the 2017, 19 budget, it had been adopted, and it, it actually says that additional charges for services provided by the general fund to electric, water, wastewater, and solid waste utilities, and the airport communications proprietary enterprises are recommended based upon the enterprise cost reimbursement study completed in 2015 computed using cost of service methodologies. That was in the budget book.
I know.
And so I took that and moved forward. I, I have since done more research, not as, not initially, but I've, I've looked at some of the history of all of this. And I think that if we were, if we hadn't been doing this already for six years, that, I mean, that's, that, we've already, we've been doing it, and I don't, I don't see that we've had any kind of issues with it. But I do think that because we are 10 years out next year from the study, that it's time for us to look, do another one.
Again, the council made the recommendation to do that some six, seven years ago to do the new study. We never truly approved, although approving the budget, they said, because we approved the budget book, therefore we approved the study. The council never truly approved the study. We, we made the recommendation that it go out to a new study.
So the last recommendation that I found, and, and this was just something that came, I, I was able to find today when I was looking at minutes, that the last recommendation, I think it was on July 19th, that we, we were supposed to, or the, the committee had brought to council, that they were needed to bring the reimbursement study back on a future agenda item for discussion and possible action. And then nothing happened.
Yeah, exactly. I'm saying, so you kind of got, I get it. I get what you're trying to do. Understand, but that's, my objective is to defend us and make it even much more so defensible for us, okay? And, and understand what's going on with the utilities, because we are taxing the utilities.
I, I really don't believe that it's a tax.
Not, not in the form of tax, I mean, we're stressing them. Let me rephrase it.
We're charging the utilities for services that the general fund is providing to the utilities.
Well, yes and no. I mean, I, as per the study, so if you really went down and methodically went through and saw, like, the right-of-way component, or, again, like I said, as an aspect of rental at City Hall, nobody charges rent and as well, especially the rate right now. You're, you're 200% market rate in town for office space, and then you're charging him a replacement cost on top of that. Nobody gets replacement on top of rent. And, and that's an aspect we said, it's, you can't do that. But that's almost equivalent to what the rent is being charged. It's like 2.20, $2.20 a square foot replacement. Nobody renting a house out here gets a double dip that way. So that was one of the aspects we said was a no-go. And there's another, a lot of other things that were in the enterprise, we felt were overinflated, like I said, with the right-of-way. But likewise too, the, the aspect of charging a million dollars a year at the wastewater plant for public safety support. And, and again, there's, there's documents out there that say, when you start moving money from one pocket to the other pocket, it's like charging yourself rent for parking your car in your own driveway. And, and that's kind of one aspect that's happening here.
I might say it's like charging my, my college-age daughter to park her car in my driveway.
Yeah, if you're the one paying the daughter to park there, that's the problem. It's, it's the city's money, even though it's an enterprise. The reason why I formulated the enterprise was to save money to do these projects, was to save money. Instead of having everybody have their own septic system, and we all combine together and, and put a wastewater facility in.
Right, and, you know, to let, just remind that the utility rates that we have, even though they have gone up, still are much more affordable than the utility rates in the surrounding area.
No, and that's, and that's why we all united together to do that, so. All right, other people question? Who wants to go next?
I think Victor was next.
Councilmember Vega.
Christie, if you could explain, I think some of the people got lost in some of that heavy explanation because you're the expert. Enterprise is getting funded by?
Enterprise fund.
Enterprise reimbursement, the funding and the money is coming from what now, okay?
So, so enterprises are utilities primarily.
So we have, and I'll clarify here just to help a little bit, okay? We have wastewater, we have freshwater, we have solid waste. Is there one enterprise fund, or are there three?
There are four, electric as well.
There are four, okay? And I don't think we knew that, and some people need to know this, because I've seen the pie charts and see how it's sliced up to hand out the money, okay?
Yeah, four, four utilities, four large utilities, but then we also have a few other enterprises, and enterprise just means that they are, they're run like a business, and we report them financially like a business.
So they're basically little banks for each business, correct? They're bank accounts?
Right, transit and, and airport as well, as, as our, our broadband communications.
So I guess, I guess the question here is, since the utilities are being stressed to a point because of these enterprise reimbursement funds, correct? To a point because the money is actually being handed out somewhere? So these fee studies are on top of all the other allocations that are coming here, okay? So I guess the point that I'm making, are, are utilities actually solvent without the enterprise reimbursement?
So.
Besides replacement costs, okay? Because I think that's probably important.
I, I think that the way that I look at it is that the, the utilities have certain operating costs, and we need to look at whether or not they're solvent with those operating costs. And I truly believe that this reimbursement that is being charged by the general fund is a valid operating cost of the utility. Now, we can have some discussions over whether the report was, was correct or defensible at the time. That is, I have not gone into that, and I don't know what those conversations were at the time, but we have used that report as the basis. When, when, if these were private, private utilities, and they were running their business, they would have additional costs, like franchise fees, or utility user tax, or property tax, or all of those. And, and so we aren't charging those fees, but the services that are being provided are still happening. Police is still out there, and fire is still available, and, and our streets and roads are still being impacted by the large, large equipment. And so the general fund charges the enterprise, the utilities, those costs to cover the impacts that happen. And I, and I think that those are valid operating costs for the utility. And the utilities are, well, we have, we have two utilities that really, we need to evaluate whether or not their rate structure is in line, and, and where it should be. And then we have two that we've just completed, and those are recovering, so.
I got you, and I guess just to shorten some of my questions here was, we're actually, we're being stressed on a fee study by the utilities because of the cost of everything else. So we'll never, ever get to a level playing field as far as utilities. And one of the reasons Lompoc is like this because they're privately owned utilities, because Lompoc owns its own utilities, correct? Otherwise, most places don't have a little piggy bank to pull from or whatever, okay? I guess, and the point I'm getting to is, if there's any other cost, the reason we, I was on the ad hoc committee before for the, for the enterprise, and we never did get a good response. I don't think anybody could figure it out. Councilmember Starbuck, it gets convoluted, you know, and it's, it is. So we have trouble paying our public safety people sometimes, so to speak, okay? We're talking about anything. Could be fire, could be police, which, basically, the way I looked at it, that's what the general fund was supposed to be mainly, okay? So basically, if you tap out the general fund at 100%, plus you count enterprise reimbursement slice, it's actually probably 120%. I'm just making the 20%, whatever that percentage is. Does it exceed 100% using enterprise reimbursement? The funding mechanism that's available for public safety?
It is not over 100%. If, we, we are.
Because there is a slice of enterprise reimbursement that goes to public safety.
Absolutely, 3, 3 million dollars.
Yeah.
And, and, and that right now is covering, the 3 million dollars of the general fund is from the enterprise reimbursement program, and it, it, that covers general fund positions. And public safety is the primary positions that are general fund funded.
So it never exceeds 100% is what you're saying? Regardless of the expenditures from general fund?
Should I say that one more time?
So there's a, there's a percentage in the general fund available for public safety? That's all I'm getting at, okay?
Yes.
Right? And that's it?
Okay.
So the enterprise doesn't add to that? You're saying it's part of that? Is that correct?
It is, the enterprise, the, what the general fund charges to the enterprises is brought into the general fund, and then every, everything in the general fund, whether that be sales tax, property tax, that, from other sources, a, any of our taxes, and those reimbursements are all combined, and then together, that money is used to pay police, fire, library, parks, and so forth.
Yeah, I understand that part, okay. Oh, thank you. I'll just let somebody else ask a question. Kesar Bridge.
Thank you. It's like a bunch of spaghetti to me, CIP and enterprise funds and general fund, and I, I don't think, when we come down to the brass tacks of it, that anyone feels the enterprise funds should not pay their fair share, for whatever fair is. I think there's some feelings that the fair share is not fair. I don't think it's, we're not going to change history, and based on your presentation, I think you've done a professional job of dealing with the issue that was handed to you, and taking appropriate accounting steps as it was laid out for you. I also don't think we're going to change it this year. I don't see how, we're in the middle of the budget cycle, and based on the damage that could be caused, I just don't see a change. So I would suggest we accept the recommendation, which is go do another study. Let's get a study that we can all stand behind. We'll all have our shots of, you know, what the R O W is worth or not worth, and use the existing, existing plan that you've put in place. The only, in the whole presentation where I didn't agree with some of the elements perhaps, it wasn't clear to me if your catch-up plan had been brought to the council and approved, and that was done in a previous, or, so I think as part of whatever motion we make tonight, we should at least approve the catch-up plan to date, so that we're, you know, showing fiduciary responsibility for what we've done. And I think we should freeze it personally to what it is this year, until we get a study and have some factual information to base the go-forward. That would be my recommendation. I'll, I'll leave it to the mayor to make the motion, because he seems to be more intuitive.
It's just a presentation.
Oh, okay.
So, we're going to budget. Councilmember Ball, I won't forget you.
So, I have a lot, so forgive me for taking a little bit of time here. I, I don't even know where to start. With all respect, I heard the term heal the city. I have not gotten one email, or a call, or complaint from one constituent telling me that they're upset about reimbursement funds supporting safety in our city. What I have gotten complaints about is why don't we have more safety? So when I think about healing the city, I sure as heck don't think about how can we eliminate positions in public safety to heal the city? That makes no sense to me. So I have a couple of questions for you. Has there been any, any suggestion from the city attorney to discontinue this, this procedure, this process of reimbursement?
To discontinue it?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe so.
Thank you for that. How, city attorney, have we been threatened with a lawsuit based on our stance of enterprise reimbursement?
Not that I'm aware of during my tenure.
Thank you for that. I also, I've heard it from two landlords, the only two people I've heard, maybe three people, landlords. No offense, you can be a landlord, but they're the ones that have come and told me about this Oxnard case. So I started digging in, trying to do my own research, and, lo and behold, there are several case studies, court studies, court cases, setting precedent on the issue of enterprise reimbursement. And we can look up Citizens for Fair Rates versus the City of Redding in 2018. They sued the city, and they claimed it's a tax, it shouldn't be a tax. They lost in the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court of California said it's just fine. There's another one, Jaxx versus the City of Santa Barbara in 2017, that it was not a tax. This California Supreme Court held that charging for use of city property is legitimate. Such fees are not taxes if they reflect the reasonable value of the property right given. So yeah, let me, let's argue about the value given, but now I have a question for our police chief. Police chief from the Department of Homeland Security over the last four, five, eight, 10 years, have you gotten any updates that are utility, not ours personally, but utility infrastructures across America are now heightened targets? Have you gotten any sort of updates on that?
They are, absolutely, yeah.
So as I understand, the City of Lompoc, we're unique to a lot of municipalities because we have our own utilities. We have these four funds. We have water, provides freshwater for our city, sure as heck don't want someone poisoning that. Let's see, we've got other things, electricity, I mean, it's all dangerous, so maybe we can work on the amounts or the numbers, but the nexus for me is there. Something goes wrong, you guys are responding to that. Chief?
That's correct.
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I would add to that also, based on our geography and the manner in which we receive resources for mutual aid, it puts us at a, even more of a disadvantage when we talk about cutting to the tune of six firefighters, which are back there in the room right now, would almost make us ineffective to defend those resources.
So you kind of beat me to the punch. I was going to have you bring up that slide with cuts, potential cuts, if we could see that again. And I'm not accusing anyone here at council of wanting to destroy our public safety, but we should be very careful in the way that we approach this. And accusing the city of something nefarious and suggesting that the city is tantamount to Charles Manson is a little bit of a stretch here, considering that this has already been approved at the Supreme Court level. So let's see, I've got about, I counted, I've got about 18 or 19 folks from the police department there. About 19, that means 2/3 of those police officers and staffs standing in the back need to go. So if anyone in their right mind can convince me that this is the process necessary to heal the city, I'm all ears. Thank you.
So let me recommend that you, Councilmember Ball, let me recommend you read the HF and H study. And the complexity of it is to make sure that it is truly defensible. When you just pull up enterprise reimbursement, there's multiple, multiple latitudes of this. And our cares and concerns are to make sure, and what we did through the ad hoc committee in multiple meetings, where we determined that some of it was questionable. My goal is to make sure that the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, not to unwind all this, just to see where we're going. I don't think that you are aware that as an example for the wastewater increase, where it went from starting off at $850,000, that the recommendation coming forward is 1.7 million dollars. In having this moving forward like that, we have to have it truly defensible. And one of the concerns with wastewater was, it was based on not the value of the facility, but the cost to build it. And then we were, we came back and we said, oh, it's only they were paying a property tax. So they did a 1% assessment, not based on the public safety support. So they created it as a property tax against the waste, not on its value that you could sell it. I don't think somebody's going to pay 100 million dollars for a wastewater plant, but it costs 100 million dollars to build it. That was one of the concerns we had way back when, and we asked for a study to be done to make sure that we didn't get caught, and that we didn't get in that position. Because there are cities that have lost, and that was our concern, to make sure that we didn't lose to be in that position. Granted, I don't want anybody to be suing us. I want to get through this, but in order to fix it, we have to identify it. And that's all I was asking you to do, identify where we were going, what we're having to do, and understand that, that when we are doing rate increases, that this is part of the, the calculation in there. It's been buried very deep. I appreciate, I appreciate what Christie has done. She's done a great job presenting and bringing it forward. I thank you for that. That's all I'm trying to do for you. That's all I'm trying to do here is to see where we are. Well, it's definitely not going down that, but we don't want to be on the slippery slope and have that carpet be pulled out from under us. And I think right now, we are on a little bit of precarious position with the H F N H study. And that's my concern. All right?
Can I respond?
Yes, of course.
So I definitely, I definitely can appreciate that. I'm all for, let's do the study. That was part of your recommendation. We need to get updates, we need to tweak some things, but it is absolutely, let's see this, I think at least two or three times, whether it was the chamber or the city commissioned a survey throughout this city. I remember one that had upwards of several hundred respondents. And the number one thing on the community survey, and however we get there, let's protect it, but the number one thing that people cared about the most was public safety. Now, if you want to talk about whether something's justified or not, that's fine. But I am proud of the City of Lompoc that is able to reimburse and make sure that we have public safety available for our city and still charge 30% less than PG&E with our electric rates. We're doing a great job. We should support the city. And as far as I'm concerned, we've got no threats of lawsuits. So slippery slope, I don't get that. City attorney has not pushed us to discontinue this process. So again, I respectfully just disagree.
Yeah. Councilor Starbuck.
Well, I'm going to repeat a lot of what's already been said, but much like the mayor said, we sat on an ad hoc, you know, it's been nine years ago, I think, but defensible is the main thing. You say, okay, whatever, look at Fillmore sometime. Public safety is not going to be cut. Nobody's that crazy that we're going to do this. I think what we're wanting to do is bring to light how we're funding public safety. That's all it is. We heard this defensible on this presentation four times. I've been on the dais a long time and have never heard the word defensible, except for when we talk about this. Yeah, legal, defensible, I've heard that a lot. 1.8 million out of wastewater on right-of-way. I'll tell you, with right-of-way, okay, police cars, they're on every street, fire trucks, big heavy trucks, but they're around. Let's look at garbage trucks, three times up and down my alley a week. They pay. I should have the best alley in town by this theory, correct? That's where the garbage trucks drive, that's where my big potholes are, that's where the money's coming out of sanitation, but it gets washed into something else, right, Mr. Deering? The computation on this is my concern, and I didn't have a lot of faith in that H F N H that was done. And there was a lot of questions, it turned into a battle royal, we went into an ad hoc. It kind of went away. I think that what needs to, what is wanted by this is get somebody in here and explain how it's done. The computation was the part that was leading to the legal battles. Some of the bigger cities down south, they were freewheeling it. So that's really, I think, what the whole point is here. We sit in here and we're making, we're increasing, you have existing and what you were proposing. What is the methodology that we're going to use for proposing this? What are you doing? Are you just doing it on a percentage? Are you doing it on something that the consultant did nine years ago? Let's update it. Let us know what's going on with it. We have to stay with this. This is part of the budget. We got a month to adopt it. Of course, we're going to keep doing it, but moving ahead, we want to make sure we're doing it legal, where we don't have to have a threat of litigation like some of these cities have been through. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who puts up to oral communications? Three minutes.
My name is Martin Kraus. I've been a resident of Lompoc since 2013. Are you suffering from post-election depression? Do you find yourself struggling to find clean words to explain your feelings towards our president? This is Kingitis, that feeling you get when your freedoms are taken away by fascism and deportation of your friends and neighbors without due process. Symptoms include shock, reddening of the face, and darkening of the mood, a drop in the economy, and weakening of your social security and future happiness. There is a cure for this, though, and it's Lompoc Indivisible. Once you apply this treatment, it allows you to breathe freely and live life again with hope and dignity, knowing that you've done what you can to stop this attack against our constitution. Find this treatment at indivisiblelompoc.org and put yourself in a better state of mind immediately upon hearing from our volunteer staff, who are willing to stick their necks out in order to keep this America truly the land of the free. The website is indivisiblelompoc.org, and you can reach them by email at lompocindivisible@gmail.com. There is a seminar on social security and how it works, what the changes will be if there are changes. It is at the Dick Dewey's Community Center, Saturday, May 31st, 1:30 to 3:30. Soon your symptoms will be brightness of mood and widening of smile. Thank you, gentlemen.
With that, we'll close oral communications, go to unfinished business, item number eight, request for city council to provide direction on ad hoc comments and funding and amending elements of the general plan and biennial budget fiscal years 2025. We have Greg and Lori Tamora, Greg Stone's Planning Manager.
Good evening, council. I'm just waiting for Lori to come up here.
Lori Tamora, Contract Planner for the City of Lompoc. We're here tonight to follow up on our conversation that we had at the city council meeting about a month ago. And the key items at that meeting was bringing forth a strategy on what's going to be happening with the update to the general plan, addressing a different ad hoc committee that was involved with general plan policies started in about 2020. And so I'd like to just go through the presentation and then answer any questions that you might Many of these slides are similar to the ones you've seen previously. Again, we're just going to go through the overview and then make a recommendation. Again, a general plan is the framework for the city. It includes a number of different elements. It talks about how the city would be developed, mixes of uses, extent of infrastructure, and sets policies and measures for implementing the general plan. Technically, the city is allowed to amend their general plan four times a year. Usually, general plans in and of themselves in total are updated about every 20 years and reflection of housing elements and any other changes that come forward during that period of time. The City of Lompoc has a number of required elements from the state of California, land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, safety, noise, and recently, environmental justice. We also have optional elements, park and recreation, public services, urban design, and economic development. As you can see in this table, several of these elements have been updated recently, particularly the housing element, which was in response to the Rena numbers, regional housing needs, allocations that were assigned to the city, and as well as the environmental justice element that was adopted in 2024. We are now currently working on two other elements, the safety element, which was presented at the planning commission just last week, and also the circulation element. What that leaves is several different other documents that are about 20 years old now, land use, conservation, open space, and noise, along with the optional elements, park and recreation, public services, and urban design. The economic development element was adopted in 2015. So we have a situation where some of these elements are off-cycle, and what we're looking at is addressing the comments that the city council provided when they were looking at different policies, as well as how we're coming up to the horizon of updating these elements to take us out to another 20-year cycle. Remember, our general plan is the 2030 plan, adopted around 2010, and now we're moving into that next cycle. Along with updates to the different elements, you also include environmental impact report. All of these elements relied on an environmental document that was generated in 2010. And as these changes are occurring with these other elements, we refer back to that and we adopt addendums to that original E I R. Now, state law has changed quite a bit with CEQA. There's a number of additional items that environmental documents need to include. As noted here, wildland, fire hazard, energy use, greenhouse gas emissions, and vehicle miles traveled are all new categories that were not part of that E I R. And so as we start going into an update to the general plan, a new environmental document would be analyzing those items, as well as all of the other ones that the previous document had generated or reviewed. The ad hoc comments were brought before the planning staff by councilmembers Starbuck and Vega in July of 2020. There were several meetings that went through, I believe it was about 70 different policy changes or measures that were identified in the land use, the conservation of open space, and the economic development elements. And recommendations were made to amend those policies. But they, relooking at the funding sources, they decided to defer it. We resurrected that effort again in 2023 with a hearing at the planning commission and then bring back to the city council in May of '24. Additional discussions were made in regards to pursuing the changes to the policies and measures at that time. Again, it was delayed, and then we resurrected it again based on city council's request in January of this last year and, or of this year. And so we've had a hearing in February, March, April, and we're back here in May, talking about how best to move forward with this process. Some of the main elements that were identified is changing some of the shells to should, changing some of the wording in the different policies. Some of them were just eliminating policies. There was a lot of discussion and recommendation that maybe the economic development element should be retired in total or merged into the land use element. There was definitely a lot of recommendations by councilmembers to focus on policies that talked about agricultural protection and promotion, preservation, particularly those agricultural areas that abut the city and may impact some of the visions of annexations and development around the fringe of the city. So we talked a lot about that over the last two months, and what we brought forward to you tonight was how do we accomplish this effort? And there's three options. The first option is to do the ad hoc changes and focus on just those policies and embed those into the different elements, land use, economic development, and conservation open space. If we do that targeted change, we're estimating that it would be just under about $100,000 and would take about 12 months to 18 months, just depending on the cycle that we're working in.
Can you go back a second? You said $500,000 to $50,000.
I'm sorry, it was $100,000 if you added up both of those categories. Yes, I'm sorry if I misspoke. And so that's option one is the first proposal. Going back and looking at that option one, if we do that over the next year to 18 months, it's still require, we still would need to focus on an update to the rest of the general plan. So this is a stopgap measure is option one. Okay, option two is focusing our energy on the four elements that were identified that haven't been updated, land use, noise, conservation, and open space, and also addressing our optional elements that may or may not need to be updated or merged into the land use element, like the urban design and the economic development elements. They could play well together and move some of those policies into that document. This was referred to as the technical update to the general plan, and that was about $600,000. And that would probably, if we got that in the budget, activate it, we could probably be in a two-year to two-and-a-half-year cycle to get that. And of course, addressing all of these policies that were brought forward by the council in previous efforts. The last option is a full sale update of the general plan, taking it out to the 2050 plan and a new environmental impact report. And this is taking not only the policy, the elements that need to be updated, but all of the elements and making sure that they are all updated at the same time. Realizing that we also have looming out there is another update to the housing element in 2031 that would take it out to 2039. So there's a number of things that are always moving in this cycle, and the estimate would be about $1 million for all of that update, and it would probably take us out to about four years in that timeframe. So next steps, recommendation. Again, option one is a stopgap measure, but it doesn't address the whole effort that needs to be done. Option two is the technical update that I think is strategically the best option. Option three is a more Cadillac version of the update, and we would be spending more time on pulling the information together and moving the general plan to the 2050 plan. So staff is recommending that the city council move forward with option two, allocate, you know, the budget cycles for the next couple of years with approximately $200,000 in each year, authorize staff to move forward, getting proposals, and bringing on a team of consultants, both for the environmental as well as the permit processing portion of this or the collaboration portion of it to update those elements. There's two items in, in your packet was a budget that was offered by Mintish Harnish, who has been the consultant all this time. This is a working budget. We would go out to a full RFP, request for proposal, and look at other consulting firms. We don't want to just continue to favor one consulting firm. We'd like to look at others. They have been good to us in all of our efforts so far, but it's only prudent to go out for a bid process. We also, as part of that, one of the recommendations that was in the Mintish Harnish We also, as part of that, one of the recommendations that was in the Mintish-Harnish proposal was doing community meetings. I think there was three or four different community meetings. And today we talked a little bit about that, and what we would recommend, and it'll be part of the package when we come back, is actually establishing a general plan advisory committee and having a citizen engagement that's more assigned to it. The experience that the staff has had in the past is setting up a community meeting and nobody shows up. But if you appoint a group of people, if you assign them, if you have them engaged, and it's much more proactive way of getting the community's input and having a vested interest in the general plan. And so when we go out for an RFP, we would definitely recommend having some kind of once-a-month meeting or something that would really bring those people in to an engagement One other point, last city council meeting was a request to provide an annexation letter or a letter to LAFCO in regards to, you know, how do we instigate that process again? And going with option two would be one of the springboard methods of encouraging and engaging, letting LAFCO know that you are updating all of these documents. And so I don't know necessarily, and we'll take your guidance. Sending a letter at this point might be a little bit premature. I think if we get this moving forward in the budget and we get a proposal moving and everything else, we can tell LAFCO we're doing an update to our general plan and our land use element and our policies, and we want them to be working with us on that process. So I'm here to answer any questions and look forward to your direction.
So the option two, I just want to make sure I still have internalized what you've said at a previous meeting, would have a 2050 date on it?
Correct. What we would do, again, trying to be as efficient as possible, is we would go through all of the elements, make sure that they're consistent with the changes to the documents that we are doing, and then retitle all of them for a 2050 element.
Okay, so at a top level, one could say that option two is about three years at $250,000 a year and gets us to 2050, and we're done in three years. Option four says we get to the same place, it takes four years, and costs us a million. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct.
And based on the schedule, either option two or option three, both will take about $250,000 a year.
Correct.
So, okay. It seems like a no-brainer to me, but okay.
And again, that's why we suggested tightening up the budget, but with trying to get the same goal. And so that's why we think option two would be the successful way to go.
Councilmember Starbuck. What kind of price or savings could we expect if we deleted these four optional elements? We don't need them. They're just there. Nobody looks at our general plan but somebody at the state and us. We've proven that it doesn't work around here at the county or the local government level, so if we just deleted those, that would lower the cost. They're not necessary, they're not part of any kind of planning.
The budget as outlined for option two was focusing on the four elements with the idea of merging those elements into the optional elements.
You're right, but that leaves four of the required elements.
Correct.
And four optional.
Correct.
So technically, you know, being smart like us, right, you would think, well, it would cost half as much if we're only going to update four instead of eight, but that's not the case. So what would our savings be if we got rid of those elements?
We still need to go through the process even to eliminate the four elements because...
What's the process? Not including them in their general plan?
But we would, it's kind of like surgically removing something. You have to analyze it to determine how much you're going to take out.
Well, all of it, if it just disappeared, how would they know, right?
I mean, we could do that, but our recommendation would be that you look at those elements and see what are important policies and statements that were justified those elements to be created in the first place, and move them into the land use element, or the conservation element, or the open space element as appropriate. And so that, part of that process would be the citizen engagement as well as the environmental review process.
You know, I'm just looking at a way to kind of make this affordable and streamlined, and I've learned over the years that this open space and some of these, when we're putting antennas and sell things and we're doing all this dirt work in our view of Lompoc, and you go to the county who's approved it and say, hey, our general plan says that this can't happen, and we didn't care. So, I mean, if it's here, anyhow.
I appreciate what you're suggesting, and I think that's why we went with the option two, is to really focus it as far as the effort that would take place.
Councilmember Bridge.
Just a quick question, and again, educate me if I'm off on this, and I think I agree with option two. I think that makes sense, but I'm curious, so in terms of us funding that down the road, it's suggested that we might have to defer something, or that a capital project, we push that off so that we can fund that? Has there been any discussions of how we would fund, I think it was 338, okay, that would tag the general fund down the road?
Yeah, we haven't evaluated exactly what would have to be eliminated. We would put it in the, we would have to evaluate it during the budget process, so that would be something we would talk about next week.
Awesome. Just pointing out that nothing's for free, there's always a little bit of a trade-off there, so.
We would have to look at what would we cut if we, we don't have a lot of extra.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridge.
I just have two items more. So we have to do a general plan update, there's no question about that, right? And I think the last meeting, we talked, to get where we need to get, we're going to be starting in 2016, if you assume it's completed by 2030. And so doing it in three years at $250,000 a year, or four years at $250,000 a year, we're spent, it's a state mandate, I believe, so I'd just like to make that point. And then the LAFCO letter. So choosing my words carefully here, when we talk about annexation, there's sometimes a couple or few components of that. There would be some people who would suggest, for example, we should annex Mission Hills or Vanity Village. When I brought this up at the last meeting, I believe I was the one who brought it up, I was more concerned about Bodger, and Bodger's going to happen whether we get our general plan done or not. And I would like us to put a stake in the ground that says we think it belongs to us. And so yes, it'd be wonderful if we could say we were doing our general plan, but Bodger's going to happen either way, and we're going to get asked, I believe, to do a can and will, and it's kind of like when you go for a job opportunity, you've only got one chance at playing this game. So I personally would think we should get our stake in the ground and tell LAFCO they failed, and the success criteria says that comes to us. We're going to have to service it, our police department's going to service it, our utility department's going to service it. That should be in our city, and I'm sure Jeff will come back at me tomorrow and say, well, Steve, you don't know all the nuances of what we've got to do here, but somehow I think we should get a stake in the ground and say that's our expectation. So that was what that was.
And if I just may give you just a brief update on that, you know, the Builders Remedy project has been filed with the county, they're in process with it, it has been accepted. There are four, five more steps that the project has to go through, and one of them is its own environmental impact report. Staff here in Lompoc have been meeting with the city staff to make sure that the environmental review document includes a full discussion on annexation to the city of Santa Maria, including utilities, infrastructure.
You said city of Santa Maria.
I'm sorry.
Giving it away.
Where am I today?
You're all right, you're all right.
No, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, so we are in the game on that project, and we're communicating, and we've provided documentation to that effect, and we've also been in communication with the applicant to...
And I think that's wonderful, and we should keep doing that. I also think we should be in communications with LAFCO and tell them this is where we're going.
We'll work with the city manager and attorney on that, so.
Anybody, Councilmember Bridge.
Real quick, and this may be a silly question, but I'm just kind of curious. So if, if I understand this correctly, if we finish this, you know, if option two finishes, we get it all done before the 21, or the 31 to 39 housing element cycle, do we need a supplemental EIR for housing, or can we rely on the, does that make sense?
When we updated the housing element this go-around, we relied on the 2010 EIR. It was an addendum to that document. There was some costs involved with the consultant to write that, but it was piggybacked on the parent EIR.
So we wouldn't accidentally get timed out or cut in between? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Don't rush on down. All right? See, nobody rise, we will close, public comment. Bring back to the council. Guys got some deliberations, got some motions? What do you think? I don't know what you guys' motions to do. You got a first and a second or something? I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you did. What'd you guys do? What's your motion?
My motion is to accept recommendation of option two. Have them come back on the plan.
Did you second it, Jim?
I second exactly what he said, yep.
You're a funny guy. All right, we got a first by Councilmember Bridge and a second by Ball. Staff recommendation, take a number two. Moving on to written communications, any written communications?
No, nothing.
All right, and I'll bring us back to item number four. Number six? We could do four again too, couldn't we?
Sure.
That one was so much fun. All right, number six, sorry about that. Item number six, come on, this is the adoption of resolution declaring the council's attempt to levy assessment for '25, '26 fiscal year.
That's a pretty complex document, so I've written some of my questions, so if it sounds impersonal, it's just because I wrote them, and I probably don't write like I normally talk, but... So the first question I had is, can we confirm that all the revenues collected through this assessment are deposited in a separate fund, and we can get a breakdown showing how those funds have been expended, specifically identifying where the cost that funded assessments were accomplished?
Absolutely. All of our revenues for the parking pool assessments are in two different funds, actually, but yes, we can absolutely pull that for you.
Perfect, thank you.
The second fund being the Community Facilities District, which is some of you, sorry, should have specified that as well.
So when I read the report, it includes that the special benefit, that the improvements must not be available to the general public to the same degree as to the assessed parcels. And I'm confused how we can do that with public pools and parks that are open to citywide and not residents. How do we ensure that the general public doesn't get the same degree of access as the assessed parcels?
Can you ask it again? I'm not sure I understand.
Sure. It took me a while on this one, so I can relate. So my understanding is you have to show kind of two things. You have to show that, actually, three. You have to show that it's proportional, you have to show that it's above the basis, that it's a special benefit, and you have to show that it's providing a value, a unique value to the assessed parcel. And several of the items I saw on the list appear to me to be public facilities, and I'm having trouble understanding how you would show that that was a special value to an assessed parcel. And perhaps you'll have to come back. If you can't answer them today, I understand, because like I say, it's a complex document. So that's my question, and I have several, so if you'd like to delay that one and come back, or if you can answer it.
I can give my best answer. I also wanted to specify, I do have the consultant who put the engineer's report together for us, he's on call, so if we need to ask him questions, I can get him to call in the public line, so we can have him available as well. To the best of my understanding, with this, with the special assessment that you're talking about and getting special benefits from it, this is basically charged to, it's tacked onto the property tax for citizens of Lompoc who use these facilities. It helps offset some of their operating costs to be able to provide that to citizens. And I'm not, beyond that, I'm not 100% sure if I, I don't think I answered your question based on the look on your face, but I'm not sure how we would determine if it's a special...
So the improvement, let me quote, "The improvements must not be available to the general public to the same degree as to the assessed partials." So I'm a citizen, you're assessing my taxes, tell me what I'm getting special that the general public is not getting in the park.
That would be something I don't have. You are right on that.
Yeah, Councilmember Bridge, it may be useful to, if we do have the consultant available who actually wrote the report, might be useful to ask that question to him.
Okay, you want to, you want to go through the list and then defer those to him and get him on the line?
Just sending the text now?
Okay.
I also would say that that, in a lot of ways, is a legal question, and I have, I do review all these staff reports, as you know, and I have been looking into that question. I'm not going to have a final legal answer tonight unless the consultant, the engineer does, but I would want to say that there's nothing that prevents you tonight from, this is just scheduling the public hearing for, I think, June 27th, or June 17th? We could still schedule that public hearing, and if you had questions that you need answered before then, we have almost a month.
Sure, I just don't want to walk into a public session when there's some questions about the appropriateness. This next one may be a Christie kind of question, but the report, to me, when I read it, implies about $5 million in capital projects, and I was under the impression that we only had about 500K in discretionary capital projects. So how do I reconcile those two different images that I have?
Some of those capital improvement projects that were included are not paid out of the general fund, they were included in Mr. Guerrero's presentation, that were being paid out of, say, CDBG or...
No, I don't think you can pay them out of CBD.
No, I mean, they're just included in the, this is just the budget.
I don't think you can include CDP projects in an assessment of this type. I'm sorry, I'd have to bow to Jeff's expertise, but I'm pretty sure that that's not allowable. You can't use it as a cost basis.
It may not have been included, and I might have misspoken on that, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Okay, well, then I'm back to my same question. Where does this $5 million come from?
I was getting to, some of it is part of Mario's presentation that he gave, which is including funds that aren't the general fund, that are pre-done from, you do get, what are some of the other, if you wouldn't mind, Mario, what are some of the other locations?
So, can you tell me what page you're looking at on the report, just so that I have it in front of me? I, I do better with the, the $5 million.
Well, the cost, the cost page is 11 or 13, depending on how it's numbered in your report. If you print it, try to print it out, I think it's 13. If you look at the page number, it might be 11. And that's.
I believe that what we're doing is showing all of the projects that need to be done. It's not necessarily all those that we're going to be able to get done.
No, that can't be true either. These are, so then let's go back. If we go back to 23, 24, or all of these projects were supposed to have been completed, or you either need to do some kind of accounting rollback, give everybody refund, or, so one of the things I think you've done with this approach is you've done exactly what you said, which is just list everything you think you're going to need, and then said, oh, we're only going to take 4%, so that's so low, nobody's going to question us. But in reality, I think you might be a whole lot better off if you picked actual projects you were going to complete, and then maybe have a higher percentage, maybe not 4%, have 20% or something. But you have River Bend Park in here, it's going to have almost $4 million spent on it. River Bend Park. Now, we just got told we're not going to do CBDG, which we can't do anyway, because it doesn't apply, and I don't understand how I could ever approve a report unless you show me where $4 million is coming from for River Bend Park.
I think the city manager had to answer some of those.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. And hey, I'm, I'm not addressing you, this is the report I'm addressing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure where all these methodologies come from, but if you read in the engineer's report, number two, it says, "As determined in the section, at least 25% of the cost improvement must be funded from sources other than the assessment." So even if we use CDBG funds or other funds, they're just saying that, and I don't really come to the 25%, that's something we can ask.
That's a state, I think that's a state mandate. You get.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
We're, we're at 4%, so we're well within that number. That's why I say you could take that number much higher.
I mean, really, you could take everything out of this report and have a budget of just the debt, as long as it meets the amount of the assessment and has that 25% threshold.
That'd be fine, but you haven't. You've put in here all.
And also keep in mind that these are just a budget, and they come from the CIP. They're just guesses what we're going to spend. At the end of the day, we have to reconcile this, and we bring that back in October, but we will have the, the engineer here that can answer any questions.
No, I don't think these are just guesses. These are, you're establishing a tax rate here.
Well, I don't want to use the word guesses, I'm sorry. They're coming from the capital improvement. They're guesses on what we think we can fund, and not, all of them are going to get funded. But this is a budget, and it's just a budget, and that's all it is.
And I think what you have is a, your line off on that, you meant River Park, not River Bend Park, with that 3.9 million?
I think the CIP actually had that. We went and looked it up. It was actually River Bend, even though we ended up spending more.
You did have a Phase One and Phase Two, but this says you're going to do this next year. And, and I disagree with your statement that this is a, a budget, and we're not held to it, because we're assessing the property taxes with this.
You're correct, but the, the assessment has to meet that qualification. I think, like I said, I think for us, Kyle would be the best person to, to explain that and answer your questions, if that's all right. And we'll, we'll bring that back.
He is on the line right now.
Kyle Tinker.
But the, the assessment has to meet that qualification. Like I said, I think for.
He has to start.
Kyle would be the best person to explain that and answer your questions, if that's all right. And we'll, we'll bring that back.
Kyle, can you hear me?
He is on the line.
You started before we were able to hear you on the speaker. Could you start?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we're able to hear you.
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Hello?
I guess he can't hear us.
Are you able to hear us now?
Yes, it's started.
No.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
You have to speak through the phone. This is the line.
You have to speak through the phone.
We can hear you, but.
Hello, sir?
Hi.
Hi, do you have, are you, are you watching the, the meeting right now?
Yes.
Can you turn that off?
Yes, it's off now.
Thank you. And you're ready to begin?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, so this is Kyle Tinker, city consultant with SEI Consultant Group. So I understand there was a question regarding the general and special benefit. So you are correct, you know, it's, these are public facilities, and so, you know, while, you know, these public facilities provide special benefit to the property owners, you know, that doesn't say someone from outside the city, a non-property owner, can use these, or cannot use these public facilities. So that's why you see in the engineer's report where we calculate the general benefit. So essentially, we come up with a calculation that quantifies the benefit that is received by non-property owners paying into the assessment. So if, if you look at the budget on page 12 of the report, you'll notice that 25% of the total budget must come from other sources to pay for that general benefit that is received by individuals who do not pay into the assessment.
So, so can you hear me?
Yes.
So, so can you tell me what the special benefit is to the parcel owners?
Yes, so if you go to page 14 of the report, that's where it talks about the benefit factors to the, to the property owners. So the first one is proximity to improved parks and recreation facilities, so the proximity that these property owners have to those improvements. The second is access to improved parks, open space in recreation areas, improved views, and then extension of property, property to outdoor areas and green spaces for properties within close proximity to the improvement. So that's, that's the benefit that property owners receive. Obviously, as I, I just mentioned, you know, individuals who are not property owners or live outside the city do not pay into the assessment, who use these, utilize these facilities, they're receiving benefit, and that's where that 25% calculation comes in to offset the benefit that those individuals are receiving.
Well, it appeared to me that every one of those benefits you neared also went to the non-parcel owners. I didn't, I didn't hear anything that was unique to the parcel owners. We can come back to that.
Okay.
So one of the questions that we kind of went back and forth on, I'm not sure you heard, was these estimates used as the basis for the assessment are expected to be completed, or they're just on a piece of paper so in case we want to do it?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you guys, but I think what you're asking is the proposed budget, are these projects that, you know, are going to be completed this year? Is that the question?
Well, I wasn't really asking if they only had to be completed this year. I was asking, are they expected to be completed?
So, so I mean, this is the budget that is provided to us by staff. You know, once we receive the budget, we make sure that the assessment rate is, you know, correct and, you know, justifiable?
Well, let me ask it a different way then.
Okay.
So the previous year, River Park, I believe it had about 1.2, I can't read it here on this page, but River Park had improvements done under last year's, let's assume they did, and those improvements were not accomplished. Is there any calculation that needs to go on to rectify that the basis was used to create the taxes, but the project was not completed?
I apologize, I'm hearing like every other word on that. Is there any way for the, the phone to be closer?
Can you hear me now? Maybe I was too close to the mic.
Yeah, that's a little better.
Okay, so River Park had improvements done on the budget, was related to be done on the budget in the previous year. Those improvements were not completed or done. Does a calculation have to be made to rectify the fact that the basis used to create the assessed tax?
No, so essentially, you know, the, the engineer's report is required to, you know, show a proposed budget. So if, you know, those, those projects aren't completed, you know, there's no requirement to, you know, rectify, you know, where the funds went to the various improvements.
So we, we report back in October what the actual costs or what the actual projects are that we did complete, and show that we used the assessment, and we met the 25% minimum, sorry, it's late.
4% is what we say we're doing.
We have to match 25%. The city has to commit 25%.
No, I think what the report said is 25% is the state requirement, but I think if you look at the assessment, it's about $300,000 plus change, and the budget is in the 10 or 12 million dollar, so you're nowhere near the 25%.
So it, it's, it's saying that we, we have to put in at least 25% of the total, or.
Of the actual spent?
So we're, we're, we're putting, we're covering that general cost out of, out of either general fund money or other funding. We are not using 100% of these funds and nothing else.
I understand that, and I believe you're doing that. What I'm having trouble with is three components. I'm having trouble that we're doing work on things that are not unique to the parcel, that it's just general. I mean, one of the line items in here is, is a general operating line. How you can say that you got something above the basis are unique, I'm having trouble with that. I'm having trouble that I don't believe we're going to spend $4 million on River Bend Park next year, and we've got that in the report, and the engineer's going to say, well, that's the number we were given.
Right.
Right? And, and we're using it to calculate what we're taxing the people for.
So we're not, we're not using these numbers to, to do the calculation of what we're taxing. We use the, the chart, the table for the yearly CPI rates, and the amount that is taxed is based on this calculation here. It isn't tied to the project value. The final projects need to show that we have used more than what we've collected in the assessment. And, and so this, this budget is really just, so this is what we think we might do?
Well, the, the table calculates total benefit of improvements of 12, 11,000, or $11 million. It then takes it to a single family equivalent of 11,000. It then says, well, the benefit received per SFE is $950, and then that's used as a basis to come up with a fair $35 tax assessment. That's the process. I, and Robert's shaking his head, yes. So it certainly is used to calculate.
Well, it's, it's not, the budget part of it isn't all included in that calculation, though. We present it as the budget for, for what we hope to accomplish for the year, but it's not part of that calculation, is what she's trying to say. It's done by, it's separate calculation, it's just included on that budget page.
Okay, let's just take it away from all this. You're telling the community, we're going to do $12 million, we're going to try to do $12 million of projects, and you're going to have a unique benefit from it, and we're going to charge each property owner a property tax. And then, and then when we're all done, you go, but we're not really using that. That's not, we're not saying we're doing that, we're just coming up with a calculation and we can justify it. I have trouble with that. So if those numbers are not real, if you're not going to really spend $4 million on River Park, or River Bend Park, I have trouble with that. It's what you're saying we're doing, and so I don't want to belabor it. If it gets passed, it gets passed. I've pointed out what my challenge is on this, and I, we're here late, I know everybody wants to go home, so.
So can I propose that what we do is go ahead and, if you, if you all can set the public hearing, we can go in and review this budget over the next two, the next two weeks and make, and revise it based upon what the numbers are showing now. When we put this together a month ago, we were not as far along in the budget process as we are now.
I'm not criticizing your work, I'm just pointing out.
So we can, we can reevaluate this budget here that is on page 11 and 12, and have it represent not just our, our we hope tos, but what we really think we can do, because...
I think that would be wise.
If we do that, we, we will have, there will be less on, on this list, but still plenty to justify the assessment.
I think that would be wise.
Also, Councilmember Bridge, in the next staff report for that public hearing, I can have a, as clear as I can make it, explanation about the legal issue on the special benefit.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Kyle, I appreciate your help, and I'll talk to you tomorrow through email.
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation that was implied in the consent decree and move this forward for public hearing.
Let it in there, so they can hear you.
Thank you.
Go read your motion in, so she can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had moved it closer. I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation that was implied in the consent calendar and move this forward for public hearing. Councilmember Bridge made a motion. Do we have a second? Vega, what the heck? The motion went away.
That was my call.
He's pushing buttons.
Pilot error.
Try it again. Hold on, hold on, there it goes again. Councilmember Bridge, second by Vega. Very good, let's go ahead and vote. That passes 5-0. Very good, moving down to the next and final oral communications. Everybody's just waiting for the last time, right? Give you two minutes. Seeing no one rise, we will close the final oral communications. We'll come back to council comments and meeting reports. Let's go first. Councilmember Bridge. So I think a lot of our concerns revolve around meeting a budget. So I think a lot of our concerns revolve around meeting of budget and revenue. And I have a concept. I'd like to get council's concurrence to bring it back to either the budget meeting or the meeting after, because it's budget-related, on economic development. I've shared it with the staff, but I can't share it with you guys until we get concurrence to have it at a open session here. So I'd love council's concurrence. I guess I need three of you guys to. It's economic development. It's a plan I'd like to do to increase revenue in the city.
Do you want to bring?
I can't, I can't.
It's not, it's not to do it, it's just to discuss a proposal that Councilmember Bridge would like to propose to the city council. Is that right?
Yes.
And you were asking for it to be on which agenda?
I, I'm not sure how busy the special meeting is, and I don't want to belabor it, but I think it's fairly tight related to the budget. So whatever Christie needs to make sure she can meet the June deadlines, because I'm going to be asking for council's concurrence with the plan or some modification.
He probably bring that next week, just for his discussion, right?
Right, we can, as far as the discussion goes, we can put that on the agenda for, for next week as part of the budget workshop. I'm not sure if we can do, in a workshop, if we can have direction.
Well, what Councilmember Bridge would like is concurrence from the rest of the council and direction on proceeding with his economic development plan that he wants to propose.
Yes.
So that would need to be a separate agenda item, and it can be on next Tuesday, or it could be on a later meeting, but it needs to be a separate item from the budget.
Yeah, well, I think it'd be good to discuss it at the special meeting, and then we can decide if we don't want to go forward. If we want, then we can carry it forward.
Sure. So it'd just be like a discussion item for council to decide whether they want to move forward with it, and there's no staff report required. What we would do is, if you have a written proposal, we would put that in the agenda packet as the quote-unquote staff report, and then you could present it at.
Okay.
At that meeting.
So can I get concurrence?
I'm just not sure what staff preference is, if you want that, or you're able to have that happen on the 27th.
Well, I, I think that it makes sense to do it on the 27th because it's budget-related.
Okay.
The 27th is already packed, so we just need to know that it's, it's going to be a long meeting, but we're going to get a lot of good work done.
I'll be quick.
I'll give you a second. I'll give you a third, as long as you're quick. You got a second, you got a third. There you go.
All right.
All right. Is it, let's go, Councilmember Vega. Any comments, meeting reports?
I'm done, thank you.
He's done. All right, Councilmember Ball.
Just a quick one. I got to attend the, mayor was there as well, the 100th anniversary of the local Rotary group, and congratulations to them. That's a big accomplishment. 100 years of anything is amazing. So again, it was great to learn a lot of the history and hear some of the old founder names, and I learned a little bit more about what made this a very cool and unique place. So congratulations to the local Rotary for 100 years.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Lucky you guys. So how many knew there was a rodeo Sunday in Lompoc? Over 1,000 people attended? Yeah, I think it's, we'll see how it works, but a shout-out to staff. The gentleman who put it together said it was the smoothest city he'd ever had to work with. He got his permit processed in two and a half weeks. So those who say you can't get it done, Lompoc proved it can get it done. So shout-out to everybody who coordinated and staffed and got that done. Awesome job. I know he was impressed, and he was running around telling everybody he couldn't believe it, and what a great job Lompoc did, so. Carry on with that, the rodeo thing. We had Missouri A annual report documents. Anybody who's interested in a Missouri A annual report, here's Missouri A annual reports. There's also a program that's out there for those of you who have a wood stove, because I'm the rep of APCD, Air Pushing Control District, and I had it right here somewhere. There's a document that's out there looking for grant, or giving grants out if you want to change out your wood burning stove to a, here it is, a heat pump or electric appliance in your fireplace. I think it's up to $11,000. There's a little card I'll set there. The clerk can put things together. The, and a couple documents that the SB CAG Connected 2050, 2025 Regional Transportation Plan is out there. It's available on SB CAG's site. There's a lot of interesting data and documents. I have a couple charts to put out. One is, we are growing economically, and this gives the, the numbers that are out there for new jobs, and Goleta's well over 5,000, Santa Maria's right at 5,000, and of course, you look all the way through the map at Lompoc, and that 10-year span was zero, so net zero. So not put it out to embarrass us, but in order to move forward, we need to know where we've been. Another interesting chart that's in there is the year 2000 to 2023 housing, and it says we are building new housing. And Lompoc was 1,000 houses in that 23-year time period. Guadalupe, 899, so, I mean, Santa Ray, 8266. So I think it's important to see what's going on, and unfortunately, I think the last 10 years, I think we only built, I think it was 88. We did two last year, so our numbers were down, but that we're going to turn the corner and shift things into gear. Trying, trying. Went to a lot of meetings the last couple of weeks, Councilmember Vega. Again, the Robinson Bridge aspect, that's a project we've been working on for a long time. It's the replacement of the 1939 bridge. Thursday, May 29th at 6:00 PM, right here at City Hall. Get your input in and see what's coming on and what's going on. So the city manager did put that as well, and I appreciate you guys putting that. That's a big deal for our town. Let's see. And thank you for the AMI meter stuff. We'll be bringing back sometime in the future something, right? But I appreciate that. I did attend LAFCO. Those who are interested with what's going on, the Richards Ranch development, it's kind of a similar argument and debate that we're looking at doing something in the future with what's going in Lompoc. Let's see, there's another report on the, I'm surprised Councilmember Ball didn't discuss that, and that's that letter a lot of people have been getting. The WMA noticed a public hearing to consider proposed groundwater extraction fee within the Western Management Area. Is that on the city's website? Any others, the document I have, it's, you know, it's Wednesday, June 25th, 2025, at 9:00 AM at Van De Brink Village Community Service District on 3745 Constellation Road. I'll put that out there. Hopefully, that can be added onto our page. I know a lot of stuff going on. I too attended the Rotary, and kudos to Rob Klug. I don't know what he had, might have been just Master of the Universe Award or something he got there, but he, well-known in that. I also attended the Senior EXCO, and tell you what, cars were leaving because the parking lot was full, and I kind of joked at him a little serious, but maybe they did a two-day event, because that place was packed out. Really, really well-attended event, and, yeah, I did, I think that's everything. Very good. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting until regular meeting at 6:30 PM on June 3rd, 2025. Surprise you didn't have your thunder on the Western Management area.